Okay, good evening, everyone. This, we will convene the... We just concluded our closed session, and we will reconvene the open session. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance, Mayor Pro Tem Kemp. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Orgel, Councilmember Ranagi.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kemp.
Here.
Mayor Whalen.
Here. I'll just ask our city attorney, was there any report out of closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council convened in closed session pursuant to the two items listed on the closed session agenda, and no reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to start this evening with a piece of extraordinary business on Family Court Awareness Month. Do we have a representative here for that? There you are. I'll come down and join you in a minute. So this is a proclamation declaring the month of November as Family Court Awareness Month in Laguna Beach. We... The purpose of this proclamation demonstrates support from the city of Laguna Beach and recognizing the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interests of children. So let me come down to the podium. So this is a proclamation declaring November is Family Court Awareness Month in Laguna Beach. I'll just read portions of it. But the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness of the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interests of children. And the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change in the family court system for the conservatively estimated 58,000 children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. And whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness of the importance of empirically based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse, including emotional, psychological, physical, and sexual abuse, as well as childhood trauma, coercive control, and post-separation abuse for judges and all professionals working in cases when the family court system... And whereas it is the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee to increase awareness of the importance of using scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value. Now, therefore, I, Bob Whalen, as mayor of the city of Laguna Beach hereby declare the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month and encourage residents to support their local committees, communities' efforts to prevent the harming of children in the hands of family members and to honor and value the lives of children. Megan, thank you for being here tonight. Would you like to say a couple remarks?
Thank you very much. Thank you, mayor and council. My name is Megan, and I am a protective parent. I am here on behalf of Family Court Awareness Month, and you did touch on most of the items I was going to say. But with the education... But with an educated public and support of the lawmakers, we are making changes. I can proudly say that last month, October 13th, Governor Gavin Newsom did sign Senator Rubio's bill, SB 331, Peaky's Law. That is a law named after a five-year-old little boy here in California, actually in LA County, where he was murdered by his father on a court-ordered visit despite the warnings of abuse from the boy's mother. This law mandates the trainings and the hours that these judicial officers would need to have to make rulings in family court on the topics discussed: domestic violence, childhood trauma, child emotional, physical, and sexual abuse, and coercive control. So thank you very much. This proclamation means the world to not only me, but many other parents here in the city of Laguna and the cities all around here. Thank you so much.
Okay. We certainly appreciate the work that's happening on that important issue. All right. This will be public communicator time for public communications. Anybody wishing to speak to the council on a matter not on the agenda may come forward at this time.
Good evening. Mike Bean with the Laguna Blue Belt Coalition. I want to thank the mayor and city council and staff for making Laguna Beach a foremost area with that. If you could please load my slide deck. Thank you. We're asking tonight for the city to support boundary revision for citywide protection of the blue belt. Next slide, please. The No Take State Marine Conservation Area would be extended to the southern city limits. And this is because intense fishing pressure over the last 10 years has dramatically reduced fish populations. It's also impacted essential fish habitats, including the kelp forests at Thousand Steps Reef and Three Arch Bay. The seafloor is often damaged from commercial passenger fishing vessels anchor gear, which is dragged by the wind and currents. Next slide, please. South Laguna's unique offshore reefs and kelp forests need protection for sea life. Every place in Laguna is very, very different. And when you move south, our mountains are very high and steep, and that means the water offshore is very deep. And these create unique mixing zones that support the kelp reefs in the area. Next slide, please. A 2014 kelp survey found kelp at Three Arch Bay in the lower part of the slide, as well as Thousand Steps Reef. Those kelp forests are gone now. And today I took a swim at Heisler Park at Rock Pile, and the kelp there is very abundant. So it's a clear contrast between the protected areas and the non-protected areas. Next slide, please. So anchoring gear is dragged by the wind and the currents that impact the seabed. In Caribbean areas or tropical areas in Tahiti, when we sail, we have to anchor on a mooring can to avoid anchor drag. But that's not feasible for commercial fishing because they want to fish the whole reef. What happens is there's a chain that drags back and forth as the vessel moves. And then to the right, lower right, you can see the legacy anchor damage. And we suspect that's what's happened to the kelp in the area. Next slide, please. You've received letters of support from Three Arch Bay, South Laguna Civic Association, the Blue Belt Coalition, OC Coast Keeper is helping us draft a petition which is due November 30th. We did come before the council in August and had this same request, but we're still moving ahead, and we hope the city council can craft a letter of support or alternatively offer a supporting document for supplemental information. Next slide, please. The top paragraph is hard to read, but Three Arch Bay has requested full protection. And the bottom paragraph talks about the damage from all the fishing in the area. Next slide, please. We're almost there. This is the configuration of the recommended extension of the state marine conservation area in No Take. It would coincide with the southern boundary of the city. Next slide, please. Multiple community benefits will be enforcement consistency, equitable community, protection for all of South Laguna, protection of our kelp forests, and achieve the city's 30-30 role for protecting 30% of the world-class marine areas in Laguna and around the world. Next slide. I think that's it. Thank you so much for all your support. We are a model in both the state and the country for sea life protection.
Mike, I have a question for you. What is the level of commercial fishing done in that zone that you described? You want to...
It's generally several times a week, and they come up from Dana Point and anchor off of the Three Arch Bay and Thousand Step Reef.
Sport fishing for individuals remaining, not really commercial in a sense of...
Well, they're technically called commercial passenger fishing boats, basically. But they're large boats, ships, actually. And so they have extensive anchoring gear in order to anchor on the reef.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mike, you know, we've obviously had a number of communications from you, and, you know, I know Alex has been on this issue as well, and I've been spending some time with Jeremy Fremont. So we have drafted a letter, will be a letter attaching the letters from Laguna Blue Belt Coalition, Three Arch Bay Community Services District, and urging the Fish and Game Commission to, you know, look at those and that we want to engage in discussions regarding those requests. So we'll get something out here in the next couple of days.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Whalen. And what we're looking for right now is just to get the petition and get over the finish line on November 30 and then proceed with negotiations. So thanks, everybody, for the support.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Roger Buto, Clean Water Now, Rides Again. Yes, we're back. I just wanted to reacquaint those in the meeting and online that I have, what's that quote, Mark Twain or something? Rumors of my imminent demise are premature. So I know a lot of people seem to think I somehow disappeared. I've been busy. I work out of this city. I transitioned from a 35-year general contractor based in Laguna to my present career for the last 15 years, which is a full-time environmental analyst specialized in land use, regulatory compliance. And I just want to let people know, I might be seeing my ghost haunting the hallways of DRB and planning as well. I would like to, tonight especially, congratulate chief, who I was very pleased, and I haven't really seen since he became chief. I think that was an excellent hire. And sorry, we don't get to have the days at Ruby's and just kind of shoot the breeze like guys do, but very pleased to see Jeff in here, Kai Bond, and Jeremy. So a lot of old faces. Well, some of them just old, but faces. Would like to also thank the city for making an excellent choice, BBK, Best Best in Krieger. For those who don't know it, one of my clients, I was the sole environmental advisor to the No Tow Road through San Clemente. Worked for all the HOAs down there, worked in conjunction with Scott Smith, who was city attorney for San Clemente. Also worked very close with Scott, Santa Margarita Water District. They are my main client presently. If you didn't know, it's Santa Margarita's the largest water district in South County and the second largest in all of the county. And recently, I was very pleased to see BBK come aboard on the Finner Valley Water Authority. This is a desert project that has the potential to store hundreds of thousands of gallons of water in the aquifer out there, and it is not going to be taking away from habitat. It's actually going to store it during peak flows, possibly overflow from drainage in the area, and then be commingled with met water, I think if you know that, that comes from the river. So a very dynamic project, very innovative. So once again, very, very pleased to see BBK and our chambers. And that's all I'm going to say for now, but like Arnold said, I'll be back. Thanks.
Okay, next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Edward Beck, past resident of Laguna Beach. I used to live at 371 El Camino Del Mar, and I have a package for the new city attorney. Maybe you can look at the past files. I previously complained about a trespassing violation that had to do with the evening before I went, was involved with seeing a federal judge. And so, I have just three exhibits and a box for the attorney that can be made public, and I will be speaking. I actually came tonight to speak about item nine, which I won't, but the last time I was here was to speak about trees was 2019, and you'll see a highlighted copy, what happened from that. So, I kind of got reprimanded because I walked down from my house, and you'll understand. I don't want to take too much time, so I'm going to hand this to you. So, the box is for the attorney, and this is for the city council people. And I left my house in April 2023, very unexpectedly, through heavy-duty, serious litigation, which will be probably in the, will be in the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal, and that's why I'm giving it to Megan, so she can probably speak with the OC District Attorney, because it's civil, but it's also criminal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. Gary Kasich on behalf of Sensible Laguna. There was a Laguna Beach Unified School District Board meeting last Thursday that got very little publication awareness. So, I guess as the expression goes, if the horse don't pull, you got to carry the load. So, I'll give you an update on it. Extensively, the meeting was to provide an update to the facility's master plan, including recommended sequencing of the projects. This is pretty important stuff. The board will meet again on December 14th, 23 days from now, and unless something changes, they'll approve a roughly $100 million facility master plan. The facility master plan update was preceded with some historical and projection data on student enrollment. The data presented shows student enrollment declining year-over-year, about a 17% decline from 2018 to 2023, 2% to 5% a year-ish. And then, projection going forward shows it a minor decline in 2024, and then some sort of magic happens, and it stays flat from there on out. The quote actually was, enrollment is projected to remain stable for the next five years. So, that's good news, but I've asked for detail on how those projections were done, what methodology was used, and unfortunately, I have to make a public records request to get that data. So, briefly, the $100 million, how's it going to be spent? $50 million at the high school, $21 million at El Moro, 14 for some new district offices, and then a little bit more for the other two elementary schools. The high school spending does include replacing the 25-meter pool at the high school with the 50-meter pool. So, that's what will be approved in 23 days. The district is considering further in the meeting, a general obligation bond. Their projections were either somewhere between 80 and 100 million dollars. Their timing in the deck was noted as TBD, but their commentary indicated it'd be tied to the retirement of the existing bond. Additionally, the timing provided some interesting information in that the spending for the pool, the new 50-meter pool, starts in 24, 25. To repeat that, the spending on the pool starts in 24, 25, and ends in 25, 26. Both of those dates are before the bond issue. So, obviously, funding is coming from somewhere. Other timing of interest to those using Park Avenue or depending upon it as an evacuation route is with all those projects that I mentioned at the high school, which are all adjacent to Park Avenue. There'll be major construction at the high school in calendar 24, 25, 26, 28, 29, 30, and 31. So, plan your activities for 2027. As reported before, the board and staff commentary continues to imply a presumptive close on the deal with the city, and the city has made it clear that's not the case, and we appreciate you pointing that out. So, those are really the highlights as I see them. There was a closed session that named negotiators. The negotiators are administrative staff, not board members, and they'll be meeting with the city soon. I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving. Thanks for tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, council members. Pat Gallus. I'm back again, asking about the latest update on various lawsuits filed by Village Laguna, their creation, the Historic Coalition, Architectural Alliance, and Preserv Orange County. My understanding is that there's three lawsuits going on. It's like, you know what the latest is, and I also wonder who's financing this. And when they initially were filed, I believe it was three years back, they had a GoFundMe request out there to the public, and in it, they stated that if they won the lawsuit, you would get your money back. And my question to the city accountant, city attorney, is if they win these lawsuits, can they actually get their lawyer fees? And I think the public needs to know that. I think that public needs to be aware of it, and I certainly like to be aware of it. And in closing, I'd like to say Veterans Day celebration was well attended by the members here, and I really appreciate it, and thanks again for all your hard work for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker. Cheryl, any online?
We have five hands raised, mayor.
Have you got the first one, Cheryl?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were just asking. I thought there was somebody else in the room. Sorry. Okay, first speaker we have is Ted. Go ahead, Ted. You can unmute yourself.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Ted Reckis. I live in South Laguna, and I want to talk about the city's use of Roundup on our public lands. A group of us have spoken against this, and the main argument for those who say Roundup is safe is that the EPA said it was safe, and it's true, they deemed glyphosate unlikely to cause cancer in humans, but I want to look more closely at that decision. Their opinion was based largely on studies conducted or funded by Monsanto, the seller of glyphosate. Many land managers and conservationists, including the city contractor who does fuel modification in South Laguna, continue using glyphosate under the idea that it's safe. Now, the World Health Organization, by contrast, found that glyphosate is likely to cause cancer. Why? They looked at independent, peer-reviewed studies that were not funded by the company selling the product. The EPA methodology and decision was so problematic, the U.S. Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has ordered the EPA to go back and redo their finding. So, the EPA had to withdraw its finding, and as of now, it's no longer legally valid. So, who was running the EPA in 2019 when they made this decision? It was a Trump appointee named Andrew Wheeler, who's a coal industry lobbyist, who dismissed the findings of the National Climate Assessment Report, who rolled back Obama administration policies on clean air, and tried to restrict the use of science in EPA policymaking. This is the guy that was running the show at the EPA at the time. He also weakened regulations on mercury. On another note, you may have heard Bayer, the parent company of Monsanto, has been sued over 140,000 times and had to settle $12 billion in settlements. That's not an exaggeration. It's 140,000 lawsuits. Just last Friday, a Missouri court found against Bayer for $1.5 billion in just one case. It was the largest damage award handed down against a U.S. corporate defended this whole year, and Bayer's stock dropped by 19%. So, we're not talking about trivial court findings here. Bayer continues losing these cases because the science is so clear, and Bayer and Monsanto knew the science was clear. That's what you have to show to win these cases. So, your communities voice their concerns about the safety of glyphosate, and you have a choice to not use it. You have your own council here tonight, and I'm just curious, if Bayer keeps losing all these cases, if it's worth cities getting more clear on the likelihood of them being held liable for these decisions as well? We can avoid that whole eventuality by simply stopping the use of Roundup in our city, and that's what we're asking for. Thank you. I appreciate you listening, and I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Okay, next speaker we have is phone number ending in 4425, star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, council, city attorney and city manager, Laguna resident MJ Abraham. I'm calling to address two things non-agendized, and I'll be speaking on item 12 later in the meeting. One is the November 14th email request I sent asking council members to put city council term limits on the agenda for council and public discussion as soon as possible. I'd like to know the status of that request. And second, I understand that we now have legal staff attending DRB and Planning Commission meetings. I think this is really necessary, and I want to thank the city manager and the city attorney for taking such measures. I would suggest, though, that the added ongoing legal costs be shared with the public. I was pleased to hear Mr. Gallus ask about lawsuits regarding our legal costs in general. For the last five years, it has been extremely challenging to obtain information on our legal billings and the status of our claims, lawsuits, and settlements around 2016, 2017. I posted on Laguna Beach Chat, my Laguna Beach City Hall Accountability and Transparency Blog, a 10-year review highlighting the most costly and lengthy legal cases in our city at the time. Over the last few years, it's become difficult to get this legal finance information from the city on either a semi-annual or an annual basis to update the report. I don't feel that it should be necessary to complete a CEPR request every single time we need to know about our legal fees, what claims we have, and the financial costs and the outcomes. It actually helps when constituents understand city finances and challenges. I hope the city manager and the city attorney can address this summary information requested, and I hope to hear from them. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'll close with, I enjoyed the art exhibit at the city hall. I wish it had gotten more promotion, and at least as much as the Laguna Beach Art Museum did. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker we have is Gene Felder. Go ahead, Gene.
Mayor Whalen, my name is Gene Felder. I live at 2680 Park Avenue. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Oh, fantastic. I belong to a number of different organizations. I'm an alternate on the Coastal Green Belt Authority, but I'm addressing the council as an individual. I'd like to bring to your attention the matter of a parcel, the corner near Annalee School. You know, the Caltrans had a safety project. There was a lawsuit. There was a settlement. My understanding is that the end of that is Caltrans owns that little tiny parcel, the very southeast corner of El Toro Road and Laguna Canyon Road. This is the tiny parcel west of the driveway. It is no longer managed by OC Parks, but Caltrans. And I'm concerned that Caltrans is not likely to manage it well, particularly as an important animal corridor. We've had, and I want to praise Councilman Mark Orgel for negotiating concerns about the city-owned parcel next to the El Cad Big Ben campus. They have a student center going in there, a 22,000-square-foot building. The adjacent parcel is an animal corridor. The only other one is this parcel, which runs along El Toro Road. And if it's owned by Caltrans, and there's a terrible fence along the new driveway, my thinking is the city is best suited to interface with Annalee School to improve the fencing along the driveway to allow for the passing of animals. So, I'm not sure when that, what the timing is, but this ought to be an item for the city, that the ownership of that little tiny parcel ought to be the city's, and, you know, offhand, Caltrans ought to give it to you, or, you know, sell it to you for a dollar. It has no value to them, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is John Thomas. Go ahead, John.
Hi, I want to follow up a little bit on what Mike Bean was talking about. The California Fish and Game Commission will soon be considering expansion of the Laguna's MPA, and I also want to thank the mayor, who just announced that there is a letter in process where the city is supporting this. This is great. But I want to add one other reason for the city to support the expansion of the southerly boundary of the MPA. I'm sorry, I have slides. Thank you. Well, many, many local groups already support the change, and the number one goal of the Marine Life Protection Act, and consequently, the MPA, is to protect the natural diversity and abundance of marine life, and it's working. There is widespread acknowledgement that Laguna's MPA is having the intended impact, but one unintended and unfortunate consequence of the current configuration is disruption of the northerly migration of the gray whale mothers and cats. Slide, please. What has happened since the establishment of the MPA is that commercial lobster fishermen have figured out that setting their traps just beyond the no-take boundary results in access to hungry, unfished, and protected lobsters walking across the boundary and being snared in their traps. Though the trap shown in the photos may be hard to see, there is a substantial concentration of traps as indicated by those floats on the surface. Slide, please. And I just read, somebody just counted the ones here on Taborock, 244. I don't know how far they stretch, but you can see from there they really stretch, but if it's a half a mile, that's a trap every 10 feet. Unfortunately, more and more lobster fishermen have figured this out, and each year, more traps are set just along the boundary. The problem is that each trap has a line attached at one end to the trap and the other end to a floating marker buoy. To the whales coming north, this must look like a huge net or obstacle that must be avoided, and they do avoid the obstacle by diverting into deeper waters further from shore, which is more dangerous for their cats. Slide, please. For people on shore who love to see the whales, there are fewer and fewer sightings each year. The last photo, those photos, is a close-up in South Laguna sightings of whales in 2015, a sight we have been seeing less. I'm not getting this picture anymore, a sight we have been seeing less often since the proliferation of collapsed tracks along that southern boundary. There is optimism that moving the boundary south and changing the configuration as proposed would let the whales come back into shallower water sooner, which would be safer and have the added benefit for people on shore, the possibility of more close-in sightings. So, thank you for the letter that you're working on. I'm glad you are supporting this, and I hope other people, you know, express their sentiments to the commission also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Ruben Flores. Go ahead, Ruben.
Hello, council members, our city manager and our city lawyer. A couple things. Number one, I look forward to the new plantings being finished in the canyon. I guess they're coming along well. Some of the plants are quite undersized, but I'm sure they'll grow and be magnificent. And in that vein, as you look over from the highway or the canyon going towards the ocean, you do see the beautiful iconic buildings of the sawdust, and how beautiful they are and how artful they are. And just beyond that are beautiful trimmed trees within the sawdust, done by this company called Peterson Trees. And we, as a city, could take very good learning lessons from how they almost never have damaged trees, no matter what the winds or the rain conditions are, because they're trimmed so artfully and structurally. And I just want everybody to take notice of that whenever they get a chance. It's a very good feather in the hat for Laguna Beach. But the reason I'm speaking tonight is I would love for the city to consider moving the piece of art that, I believe his name is Doug Snyder, did that's underneath the arbor that looks central to the Sawdust Festival. It's been there 10 years or more, and it could be beautiful, perhaps in a park somewhere or in a children's playground somewhere, and let's put a new piece of art that might be more fitting for the sawdust and for the largest entry piece of art that somebody sees when they come into our town. So, it would be a nice movement of a piece of art and a nice place for a new piece of art to go into. And I just want to work on the presentation of our town, and hopefully, we'll work on, after that, the presentation of the canyon, or actually Broadway, from forest to coast highway, and making that look a little more beautiful as the entrance to our town. I have to say, it's probably one of the poorest-looking places landscape-wise. I have to say, it's probably one of the poorest-looking places landscape-wise and building-wise in our town. And it really is the forecursor to what somebody sees when they come through and think, the beautiful town of Laguna Beach. I want to wish you all a happy holiday Thanksgiving, and I appreciate all the work that you guys do. I know it takes hours and hours and hours, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is phone number ending in 9573, star six to meet yourself, 9573.
Hello, good evening, city council members. I'm Jackie Cordero, interim executive director for Laguna Canyon Foundation. I would like to comment on agenda item number 10. Laguna Canyon Foundation is in support of the item and encourages the city to start communicating and working with...
Jackie, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to wait for item 10 to come. This is just general public comment right now.
Oh, okay.
We'll get back to that, so please weigh in when we get to that. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more hand. Chris Katsamannis, go ahead. You can meet yourself.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and city attorney and city manager. My name is Chris Katsamannis, and I am adamantly against the use of Roundup. Just a little bit of history. When Roundup first came on the market, it was patented as an antibiotic. So here we are, we're putting low-level antibiotic into the soil, which impacts bacteria, and bacteria will find a way to become immune to that type of poison. It's not a lethal dose. The other problem is, when the tests were made by Monsanto, they were tested with glyphosate only, that is, the active ingredient, and not with the adjuvants. The adjuvants are used to make glyphosate stick to the leaves. They're like surfacans, you know, soap-type things. But it turns out that test after test has found that Roundup is actually more lethal and is much more active than glyphosate itself. So all of the tests that were initially put forth by Monsanto are worthless. And when asked about what the formulation of the adjuvants were, of course, Monsanto says it's a trade secret. So now, as has been mentioned, the World Health Organization has deemed this to be a potential cancer-causing agent. However, even worse, in my view, is the tests that have been run, particularly in Argentina, in the soybean-growing section of Argentina, that found that not only is it potentially cancerous, but worst of all, it is an endocrine disruptor. Now, all mammals during the first trimester, during the first few weeks of gestation of the embryo, are exquisitely sensitive to these endocrine disruptors. You have to have a very, very fine balance to make things go right. And if they don't, they manifest themselves from things like possibly ADDH, DHD, to microcephaly and anencephaly, you know, where you have, you know, pinheads and so-called pinheads. So I don't think a community that's environmentally sensitive, as Laguna claims to be, should ever be using Roundup. In fact, I think it should be outlawed in the city totally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers, Cheryl?
No other hands, mayor.
Okay. We'll close public communications and go to council staff reports. Start with our city clerk, Anne Marie.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that if they want to give new coats and jackets for kids and teens for Orange County Supervisor Katrina Foley's New Coats for Kids Drive, you could drop them off either at Laguna Beach City Hall, the Boys and Girls Club on Laguna Canyon Road, or the Laguna Beach Library through December 18th.
Thank you. Our city treasurer, Laura.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just mention that I attended some continuing education for continuing disclosure requirements. BLX and OREC put that on. I went to a board meeting for the California Municipal Treasurers Association, and also attended a meeting for the State Treasurer's Office, CDAC, and they approved my slide deck for the day-to-day management of public funds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go to our city manager, Sean.
No additional training for me and nothing else to report.
Okay, wonderful. City attorney, Megan.
Mr. Mayor, there were a few comments directed. I mean, did you in particular want me to respond to any of them, such as the CEQA updates or anything? I'm happy to do so if you would like, or...
You mean on the pending litigation?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, if you want to give a quick summary, I mean, I think we may need to develop a more regular system of reporting, so we're not having to do this at council meetings all the time.
Yeah, we can certainly find a way to do that. That would be appropriate. But very briefly, I'll just say that there was the Historical Architecture Alliance versus the City of Laguna Beach, with the real property being the Kirbys. And the court had granted publication of the opinion, as we previously reported. The petitioners have now sought review with the Supreme Court, which was just filed within the last week. So there's a statutory period for that that we will wait on. There is the Laguna Beach Historic Preservation Coalition versus the City of Laguna Beach, but the real party is Michael Ray. And I understand that this was a CEQA challenge to the design review approval of a remodel of a sea-rated historic structure and adoption of a negative declaration, where the petitioners sought to set aside the negative declaration, compel the city to prepare an EIR. And there was also declaratory relief for judicial determinations relating to the city's historic inventory for purposes of CEQA. As I understand it, the court just issued a writ or an order for the issuance of a writ. So I actually don't believe the writ has issued yet, but it's on a much more limited basis than requested by the petitioners. The writ will set aside the approval of the negative deck, but it won't compel the city to prepare an EIR. And so that rather the application, as is or modified, would be reconsidered in accordance with the court's rulings and the requirement of CEQA. The court also denied the request for declaratory relief. And then finally, there is Laguna Beach Historic Preservation Coalition versus the Coastal Commission, with the city as the real party. And this is a challenging the LCP amendment for this historic preservation program update, which is actually pending in the San Diego court due to venue transfers. And it also incorporates a challenge to the DSP certification. There's a placeholder hearing for early 2024, and there's a working, they're working on the administrative record that will likely be extended out farther than the January 2024 deadline. And so there will be, there's no activity on that now. So we'll have to report on that later.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, mayor. I attended a couple of the veterans' events. One of them is in South Orange County. I couldn't make it, so I stood in for him and gave an award to Arnie Silverman, who's one of the World War II veterans who lives in town. He's also been married for 68, seven years, that night we were at the event. Excellent event, recognizing a veteran from each of the districts within Katrina Foley's area of the county. And then, of course, on Saturday, we had our own, which I encourage you to attend and honor the veterans and the speakers that were there, including the mayor and other dignitaries. So I think time well spent, even though it was two hours, it went very quickly, and it was a beautiful day, and we got to see some flyovers. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you, George. Councilmember Orgel.
Yeah, I'd like to offer my condolences to Tatum Goodwin's parents for the tragic accident or crime that occurred behind the movie theater. And I'd also like to congratulate the police department for doing such a great job in, you know, conducting the investigation in such a timely matter. And I know it's still ongoing, but you guys have made great progress. And as Gene Felder's comment regarding the corner on Coast Highway and El Toro, I will look into that. At minimum, I think that we could have the city negotiate a fencing, a type of fencing that will allow for the animals to get to and from the various pieces of property. And lastly, I would like to introduce a video that Visit Laguna produced, and then afterwards, a couple of them can come up and say a couple of words.
The most creative people in Laguna, in my opinion. They don't all march to the same drumbeat.
For most Southern Californians, the greatest playgrounds of all are the dozens of beaches lining the Pacific Shore. A region of such natural beauty almost inevitably becomes an art colony.
After weeks of organizing, the Sand Canyon Festival is off to a rousing start.
We are not in agreement with the proposed development, and we would like to save the canyon.
Little air, little air, eh?
We were a little bit considered the outlaws.
They would envision a trail and ride it.
They're gonna try and stop us from what? Having fun?
We decided to name it Victoria Skinboards, a matter of honoring the people that taught us. Every weekend, you're on call.
It's been going for so long, it's become an institution.
A righteous rebellion to unrighteous judging.
We really thought that we were going to change the world with love.
20,000 people in bad Laguna Beach, and we had a good time.
We're always gonna need to be fighting to protect our open space, to protect our oceans.
We need to start looking out the window and walking out the door and making things
So this is a trailer for a seven-part series, and I'll leave it to Rachel and John to announce the timing on when the series are gonna be available. But if you could come up, and I told Gavin we'd keep this to two or three minutes, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for watching. I'm Rachel O'Neil-Cusie. I'm the president and CEO of Visit Laguna. I am a woman a few words when I am up at this podium, so I'm probably gonna let John share a little bit more. But we wanted to find a way to get the community involved with telling our tourism story and making sure that they felt like they were part of it. And this was the best way that we were able to do it. We identified these stories, and we just wanted the community to tell it from their own voice instead of from my voice. As marketers, sometimes you leave out the people that we should be representing. So we let them tell it in their own words, and it is absolutely spectacular and beautiful. I cannot wait until you see all the stories that we have told. This trailer is just a little snippet of it. The rest of it, you're gonna be blown away. So we're super excited.
Thanks, Rachel. Thanks. I want to thank Rachel and the whole board of Visit Laguna for allowing me to be part of this. It was an amazing project. And one of the things that I learned, when we were interviewing 40-plus people for this project, it was insane, you learned that, you know, you look at a city, and no matter what, every city, whether they try or not, is a brand. And as a brand, they're communicating something constantly. As a brand, you're owned by, you know, your customers, whether they be your visitors, the business people, or the community itself. And so these are the people that own your brand. And when you look at Laguna Beach, there's so many segments of cultures out there, and you start looking at what they're all kind of, what unites them all. And it's interesting, we started this project with a completely different name because we thought we were gonna be featuring individuals. But what we realized is we were featuring one common mental space, and that was this sense of everyone's kind of coming from this radical origin. Everyone has that same philosophy, whether you're talking to surfers, you're talking to cyclists, you're talking to artists, everyone's coming at it saying, you know what? We're gonna do things differently. You're not gonna tell us how to do things. You're not gonna change things up on us. We're gonna do it our way. And it's, I would just like you to consider, you know, that is the brand, and it's something you need to constantly communicate and energize and reinvest in and reinvigorate. So fantastic. You guys have an amazing brand. Give yourselves a pat on the back. Let's keep generating it.
John, I just want to say, your work is fantastic. I watched that video like many times, and I can't wait for the other seven. It's really, you're such a valuable asset, and the way you put that together was just fantastic.
Sue, that's great, but it's the whole team, really. I mean, the board and Visit Laguna really is, you know, that's what, it all started when we got together and started generating ideas and really, you know, and with a community like this, how can you go wrong? You know, the people here are telling the story, you know? I just, I just do little things, Sue. Thank you, though. Thank you, John. That's it. Thanks, Mark. Thanks for sharing that. Councilmember Ranagi.
Yeah, I just want to say how great that video is. I hope maybe we can send it to our recruiter as he's looking for city manager applicants, because I really, I think it's, who wouldn't want to work in a city like that? And I also want to thank our police officers for, you know, as Mark described, it's moments like these, when we have horrible tragedies, that it reminds us how important it is to have law enforcement, and I appreciate all that they do to keep us safe. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just, I was really impressed, Chief Coward, how fast you guys were able to apprehend that suspect. And I know, in talking to you, that they were burning the midnight oil for a few days there. And it just made the community relax. A lot of people had a lot of anxiety about it, because it just doesn't happen here. Horrible tragedy, and I just feel horrible for her family. Also, thank you for getting the initial investigation going on that. On that, I'm not even gonna, I'm not even gonna mention the guy's name, that guy from Costa Mesa that was convicted of 700, for basically molesting children, got 705 years in prison. So I thank you for getting that going, because that saved probably a lot of people from a lot of heartache. Next thing, I do have, like Mark, I do have a short video, if David could put that up. And this is of a piece of art that is at the, pretty, it's on the bridge at the, across from the sawdust, and we had a dedication last week, and it's by Bo Stanton. And so you see it here. This is, you gotta see it in person. It's phenomenal. I think it's over 6,000 pieces. I went out there while they were working on it over a number of weeks. And so if you cross the bridge, you happen to be out there, and you cross the bridge, you're gonna get a chance to see this beautiful work. So Bo Stanton also did the Third Street Stairs, and the art that's on the Beer Company is quite a talented guy, and he's an Elcad graduate, but it's just really, really fantastic. And so I want to thank the Arts Commission for that, too, because they had some, they had some good choices, and they picked the right one, I think. That's it for me.
Thanks, Sue. I don't have a video, sorry. But no, I do, I want to thank Councilmember Weiss. I called him at the last minute, you know, to go down and thank you for covering that with Supervisor Foley. Councilmember Weiss and our city clerk, Anne Marie McKay, of course, are two of our only two veterans sitting up here, which we very much appreciate their service. I'll echo what my fellow council members have said with respect to the efforts by the police department, you know, just outstanding, really, over the last couple months, the achievements have been extraordinary. And it is tragic for her family, as you said, Mark, and, you know, of course, you never want to see that happen in our city, and fortunately, it's very, very rare. Then with that, I will, we will move to our consent calendar. Council, we've got items one through seven. Any items anyone wishes to pull for discussion?
No.
No.
Any member of the public? Cheryl, anybody online?
No hands, mayor.
Could I have a motion then for items one through seven?
Move approval of items one through seven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, so that'll take us to our regular order. Item eight, this is revisions to Underground Utility Assessment Defirmant Loan Program. I'll give staff a minute to set up.
As staff sets up, I do want to express my great gratitude for their work and, inspired by the city council, this plan that is being presented to you this evening will undoubtedly continue to improve with input, but it is vastly improved from our earliest draft as a direct result of the community feedback that we got on our earliest draft. So a great reminder, frankly, for staff, how much our product can improve with outreach and inclusion. And this, again, this plan, when we invite your ideas this evening for how we might improve it further still, but we're really proud of the product that we prepared, and it benefits and benefits...
and benefited from the community outreach and the feedback that we received. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Whalen, fellow council members. My name is Pierre Sawaya, Senior Project Manager. With me is Tom Perez, our Assistant Director of Public Works. And we are here to present the revisions to the Underground Utility Assessment Deferment Loan Program. The City Council approved the original loan program back in 2016. The purpose of the program is to assist property owners who have financial difficulty in paying their assessments if they are part of a formed assessment district. Essentially, the program postpones the assessments by borrowing from the city, and the program is based on certain criteria, such as age, income, and the property being the primary residence for the property owner. The loan does become due upon the sale or the transfer of ownership of the, of the property. And to date, though, we have had no applicants to the program. So City Council did direct staff to reevaluate the program on September 26, and that is due to increased interest and anticipated demand to use the program. And that's stemming partly from three assessment districts, which are in formation phases totaling approximately 580 parcels. A big chunk of that is the Woods Cove coming to a vote here in December. That takes us to the proposed loan program revisions. The major revisions we're looking at are for the age requirement and the income requirements. So the original program had an age requirement of 62. The revision is proposing to lower that to the age of 55. We are also proposing to increase the income threshold to 15% above the Orange County moderate income limit. And that moderate income limit is set by the state's Department of Housing and Community Development. So if you look at the table down below, for example, the moderate plus 15% would take, for example, a one-person household to $123,000 threshold. For a four-person household, that would be approximately $176,000. And lastly, the allocation method would simply be first come, first served basis, gauging property owners' interest in the program. The current program budget is $200,000 in this fiscal year budget. The proposed increase recommended tonight is $500,000, which will bring the total program budget to $700,000. Several assumptions were built into that increase. We're looking at, looking at 40 parcels, parcels that would qualify for the program, and that would be roughly 10% of the Woods Cove District, which is nearly 400 parcels. Assuming an average annual assessment of $3,500 per parcel would create a $140,000 year obligation toward those assessments. These are assuming 6% bond rates and a 20-year bond term. And lastly, it is also including the private connection cost, which is assumed at $10,000 per property. So with 40 parcels, that'd be a $400,000 one-time payment for those connections. Not included in your loan packet tonight, there were several minor revisions and clarifications, language added to the program guidelines and tasks. So if you do look in your packet at Attachment Three, which is page 18, there were just a couple of inclusions that we wanted to point out tonight. Most notably, on the applicant criteria in the program guideline and tasks, Item Eight was expanded upon a little bit further. Originally, it read as the loan amount and accumulated interest would be due upon the sale or the transfer of the property. The additional language is shown here and read for, for reference. And it really just expands upon that and talks about loan would also be due for any new mortgage or refinancing that creates a high value to lean on the property. However, there are several exemptions in there as well, including the death of an owner who has a will or trust, and that, you know, includes a family member. There is a dissolution of marriage, and which one spouse who was a co-owner becomes the sole owner, that would be an exemption, and also living trusts in which the owner is the named trustee and beneficiary. In addition to the, those revisions, we also have a couple very minor revisions to the processes and tasks in the guidelines. We simply replaced a loan agreement with promissory note. So Item Number Four on there, on page 19, would read enter into promissory note with the property owner and report a deed of trust. And Item Number Six would be pay the connection costs if included in the promissory note. And that brings us to tonight's recommendation, which would be to approve lowering the age limit for property owners who qualify from age 62 down to 55, increase the household income requirements to 15% above the Orange County moderate income, and to reduce the fiscal year '23-'24 transfer from the Street Lighting and Utility Fund to the Wildfire Fund by $500,000, and reappropriate that amount to the deferment program, increasing the total budget to $700,000. And that concludes this presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Sue, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Pierre, that was a good report. So we have a first come, first service, first serve on the deferment, on the deferment. So the mechanics are that they would call the city, and we would arrange for them to sign a promissory note?
Correct. They would contact the city. They'd be referenced to our Finance Department to go through a qualification or vetting process to determine if they qualify.
Okay. The other thing is, it's a little off, slightly off topic, but do we already have the design done? So we know where all the light pole, I've had a call from one or two people saying, well, we're going to get rid of the power pole, but I still have a light pole. Is that design already done?
Yes.
Is there any, is it go through Planning Commission?
Yeah, it did. It went through Planning Commission Design Review approximately a year or year and a half ago.
Okay.
So the designs are all complete and ready to go.
Okay. And then I'd like to thank Councilmember Renagi for bringing this forward. I think this is going to be so helpful for passage of this in the district and for people who really want to do it, can't afford it. So it's really good, it was a good, good suggestion.
Okay, any other questions before I open the public hearing?
Yeah, just a couple. On the, so Pierre, first of all, thank you to staff. I really appreciate all the creativity and the thought that went into this. On the, or actually, can you go to the slide regarding the change as it relates to inheritance and transfers? And Sue, I want to help me understand, does that mean that, if it could be that, it could transfer from the, a parent to a child without requiring repayment, or help me understand what that means? Is that what it means, Megan?
Yeah, so the, we just, the language was a little vague as it was in there. It wasn't clear what sale or transfer exactly would mean. So what it says in here is that if there's a change in the ownership interest in some capacity, it would trigger the repayment. But there are exceptions to that. One is if the owner dies and the property transfers to the spouse, the child, the parent, or the grandchild of the owner. That's one of the exceptions. The other exception is in the event of divorce. So like, two people co-own the home, and one of them ends up with the home. There are sort of scenarios in which it's not like, it's not intended to be a transfer so much as it's a legal, some sort of legal action requires the transfer of the property on paper.
So, because I'm just, so technically, could you have a scenario where someone dies, it gets transferred to a child, and that, and that, you know, for the next 50 years, they don't have to repay the assessment?
That, it, it's written that it would transfer, if it transfers to a child. So if it transfers within the family, it would not, it would not be repaid until another triggering event happens, so another sale or transfer of the property.
Okay.
And just the idea being, and this is a policy question, so you can certainly change the way this is drafted, but the idea being that often when there is a death in the family that it's expensive, and also the people that inherit property don't necessarily have capital to repay like outstanding debts.
Immediately.
Immediately, correct.
Okay. I have to think about that more. And then on the, could we condition that on being, it being the primary residence of the person who's inheriting it?
That it becomes the primary residence of the person. I think we could add that language in to make it effective that, yeah, upon the resulting transfers, that the, a person passes away, it's transferred to a child, for example, and that if the child lives there, that it, that the, as their primary residence, that it doesn't become due.
Okay. And then question for staff, I just want to clarify that you, it's not an all-or-nothing program. You can have a percentage of your assessment deferred, not the entire assessment?
It, it's not a tiered program, so as long as you meet the income requirements, you could have your whole assessment deferred until the triggering event.
But, but you're allowed to, for example, if you wanted to pay part of it, you can?
Yes.
And, and same with, like, you could, for example, just ask for the, the connection fee to be paid, not the, not?
That's correct.
And then the follow-up question as it relates to the connection fee, and I think this might be where we need to figure, is it possible? Because we don't, the connection fees will vary based on, you know, the contractor, or however you go about doing that. So is there a way that we could procure that at scale to lower the cost for the people for whom we were paying the connection fee?
Yeah, that's something we can explore. You know, we do have contractors in town that do this kind of work. So that's something that could be, you know, investigated to see if there's economies of scale there.
Okay. And then on, and the interest rate for the, because it's clear from this report that the interest rate is 1%, plus the interest rate of the bond for, for the deferred assessment, but that rate would also, and I could talk to Gavin about this, would that apply to the connection fee, or?
Yes, it would be included.
It would be the same interest rate, even though technically, we're not going out for the bond on that. It'll be the same interest rate, to keep it simple.
Correct.
Got it. And then, thank you. And the last question, okay, can you help me understand the justification for the age reduction?
Yeah, so we looked at the age requirements that were previously set at 62. We did decide to reduce that down to 55, just with the understanding that there are some individuals, agencies where 55 is a retirement age, and certainly, retirement planning begins at that age. So that's why we targeted that, to really open up the pool and broaden the eligibility for those folks.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, George.
Yeah. Pierre, how many inquiries have you had on this program so far? Because I do the numbers, 700,000. I want to thank Bob and Alex for working on this and increasing the amount and all the other details involved. I think it's, it's very good, because it's a large district. If you, if you divide 40 into 700,000, you come up with about 17.5 is the number of people that would be qualified. I mean, if, if that'd be the limitation, is that correct? I mean, that average at 40,000, let's say.
Yeah, I mean, to answer your first question, yeah, to date, I've, we've received probably a dozen inquiries, at least that have been filtered through me. There may be some that go directly to our Finance Department, so there may be more.
Okay, we have no idea how many there are going to be until they come to the door.
Correct.
Thank you.
If you don't meet the age requirement, and there's a disability, is there a carve-out for that?
There is. So in the criteria, it's if you don't meet the age, there is disabilities that could be considered, you know, for you to be eligible for the program.
Thank you.
Well, and clarifying Councilmember Weiss's question, I think it's, it's an annual, this will be an annual payment, so it's, it wouldn't just be for paying the whole assessment, it would be each year doing that. You see what I'm saying? It'd be a lot more than.
Okay, great.
Yeah, good question.
That'd cover a lot more people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we open the public hearing? I will open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak on this item, may come forward. Karen?
Thank you very much for working on this, and for all your questions. I learned a lot. The teacher in me loves this. This is very personal for me, so thank you. None of us wants to be involved in anything where our neighbors can't participate because they're having a hardship. And I think it's really important for all of the districts going forward. And I know you are all working to encourage more and more of these special assessment districts. And I think everyone in town will feel more excited and energized to be involved in these sorts of things, if they know the council is committed to making it work for everybody in town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Cheryl, anyone online?
I have one hand raised, mayor. Oh, two hands now. Go ahead, Tom Gibbs.
Thank you, mayor and council. I've spoken before on something that I think the council and most residents appreciate, and that is the importance of under, undergrounding. Indeed, it's the most important safety measure that this city can do to protect us from a devastating wildfire that threatens property and people's lives. And it's not just where the undergrounding takes place. Because fire spreads, undergrounding in one area benefits the whole city. And in that connection, I think it's incumbent on the City Council to do everything reasonable to facilitate undergrounding. And this brings us to the Woods Cove program. The last hump to get over is the vote. And it would be a tragedy if it does not pass because some of the owners cannot afford the bond and hook up payments. The city should be proactive to prevent that from happening. This expansion of the program does just that. From reducing the age from 62 to 55 widens the circle and is designed to hit those longer-term residents on lower income or in retirement. The increase to 15% of moderate income also expands the program sensibly. It targets the people who may have cost pressures that might get them to vote against the measure. I am concerned about the first come, first served, and the limitation to 700,000. While that seems like a high number, I'm not sure it's sufficient. And I worry about the first come, first served is deterring or indicating to residents that they may not make it. And indeed, I don't think any resident who does qualify should be excluded. I think to make this program as attractive as possible, it should be available to all residents who meet the qualification requirements. Again, the importance of this undergrounding, not just in Woods Cove, but in future programs fully justifies that. And I'll end with what I spoke about last time on the Woods Cove thing, and that is that it is critically important that the city after Woods Cove proceed to set up viable mechanisms to get undergrounding everywhere else in Laguna Beach. I think the survival of our city may depend upon it as we become further, further prone to fire risks in the face of climate change and, and other conditions that we face in California. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Matt Lawson. Go ahead, Matt.
Good evening, and I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I want, I hope everyone on council will support this program, and I agree with the comments of my former colleague, Tom Gibbs, who I think raised some very, very good points. We want this to be a program that everyone can participate in, so that everyone can share in the benefits, this public safety benefits of these utility undergrounding programs, because I do believe that they are essential as part of our comprehensive fire safety efforts. And I want to compliment staff, particularly Tom and Pierre and all the others in Public Works, and all the others who participated in the drafting of this, of this agenda item. I think they've done an excellent job, and I truly hope that we get this passed and implemented as quickly as possible. The reason is quite simple. Every single overhead utility line in town is a potentially lethal fire disaster, just waiting for the right combination of weather conditions and equipment failure to occur. Our entire community is just a spark and a gust away from the level of casualties and devastation that happened in paradise in 2018, that we saw on Lahaina about 100 days ago. Since 2012, we've seen issues with SCE equipment ignite very serious fire incidents. Since twenty twelve, we've seen issues with SCE equipment ignite very serious fire incidents at least three times, perhaps four within the immediately areas immediately adjacent to the city. The Ruby's Fire in twenty twelve. I'm sure Mayor Whelan will remember that. During a fundraiser, I think while that incident was in process down at Three Arch, we were all closer to it than we wanted to be. The Laguna Canyon Fire in in twenty in twenty fifteen. Again, I'm sure that's something that many of us will remember very vividly. The Emerald Fire at four AM last year. I'm sure Mayor Protem Kemp is going to remember that one since she had to turn on the lights in the EOC at about four fifteen in the morning. And very possibly the Coastal Fire. Now, although I believe OCFA's official investigation of the ignition source of the coastal fire is yet to be completed, Orange County files filed already two lawsuits last month asserting that the incident was caused by an electrical failure on an SCE utility pole that supported a distribution line. The county alleged the incident occurred because Southern California Edison, known as SCE, failed to maintain its facilities in a safe manner in an area of significant risk of wildfire. In September, by the way, the federal government filed a very similar hundred and twenty million dollar lawsuit against SCE because of an incident that happened in Los Angeles. These incidents are incredibly common. A study by the US Fire Service found thirty two thousand such wildfires triggered by power line failures between nineteen ninety two and two thousand twenty. It's one about every seven and a half hours. So let's get this done. Let's get the district done in Woods Cove and anywhere else that needs it where these dangerous overhead lines still exist in Laguna Beach. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers, Cheryl?
No other hands, Mayor.
All right. Close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any comments here? I did, you know, I think that well, I I'm sorry, I do have a technical question because Woods Cove, this is a general program that doesn't just apply to Woods Cove. So Councilmember Weiss, who had to recuse himself previously, we're good with that, right?
Correct. Yeah, it's a generally applicable program.
I asked. Okay, good. All right. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Thank you. So on the maybe putting that slide up again on the on the transfer on the sale and transfer. I mean, it it does strike me that you could get into this sort of in perpetuity kind of thing. And I wondered whether in the Romanet one there, resulting from the death of an owner by operation of law or pursuant to any will or trust to a spouse, child, parent, or grandchild. It's I wonder whether it would make sense to say that they have to requalify for income purposes. I mean, if, you know, if if I happen to inherit my dad's condo, you know, I I would have had adequate income to to pay the assessment. I would, you know, wouldn't have qualified. So that's a thought about, you know, or or at least maybe having the payments commence over a period of time or something rather than just ad infinitum. It could be it could be a long time.
I think the solution there could be. So if it's not your primary, if you're if the person who inherits, so like for years, if you didn't go and live in your dad's condo, you have to pay it. Right? That could be. But then if we could so we could apply that, but then we also could have a income based repayment model where you could pay. If you're not able to pay the whole assessment, you can get onto a plan where you pay two percent of your income. And and that could be the way to solve that problem.
Yeah, or you just
Or you can have like a five year.
You could just pay it over time, right? Instead of instead of getting into a variable payments, maybe which could be complicated, maybe just say that if you no longer meet the income qualification, you'd have to pay it off over ten years or something.
Yeah, I like that. So you just extend the the time.
Income may fluctuate. And so I think a standard payment would be good.
Okay.
So what are we saying for that part? What are we saying? You you can have a five like a five year waiver on the payment or something?
Well, there would have to be. I think we're saying two things, right? The primary residence point you made, and then secondarily, if the spouse, child, parent, or grandchild, you know, no longer satisfies the income limitation, that they would have to commence paying repaying the loan over, I just throughout ten year period, which would.
You know, you know, sometimes when you inherit and your, you know, parents die and you inherit money, sometimes it's more than just a property. Sometimes it's cash, or sometimes it's multiple properties. So I don't know. I think I think they should have to meet the income requirements. And then maybe have a five year repayment or something like that.
Five instead of ten?
Something like.
I think we have five year. I think that that's because within five years, you can figure out a plan.
Okay.
We'll just keep it simple and say.
If you don't satisfy the income requirement, you repay it over five years.
But even if you do satisfy, well, because then it just keeps going up again, right? If you if you and then we're never going to get repaid.
Well, no, if you inherit, it's your primary residence.
Yeah.
And your income is now high enough, and you no longer satisfy, you're above the hundred and fifteen percent of moderate income. You got to pay it over, you could amortize it over five years.
Five years. But then let's say that you're you make a hundred thousand dollars a year. Then what is what does that mean?
You 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 don't satisfy the your income, right? What what's the term on the promissory note? I guess it's a twenty year. It's got to have a set term.
Consistent with the bond, isn't it? Yeah. So the term of the bond.
So it comes due.
So it will come due.
It will come due.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you have to assume that there's the value of the home is going to increase, and there's value in the home itself. So their borrower, if he's stuck with that hundred thousand, could actually get a mortgage and remortgage the home itself to meet that requirement.
Yeah.
But it will have compounding interest, correct? Well, that's going to add up quick.
So so I think what Bob, what you suggested works. The five, you can wait five years.
Defer it for five?
For I don't.
You defer it for another five years?
I don't know.
And then it'll be due at twenty or twenty five. I think I think we were talking about twenty five year bonds on this district.
Okay. And
Okay.
Did you have more comments on?
No.
The the other the other question I have is about, or not a question, but in Manhattan Beach, they take out for number five in the applicant criteria. They don't include the cash value of life insurance policies. And I think I I agree with that. So my unless there's any objection, I would say that we take that that part out. Yeah, and then the the I think the key thing here is about the first come, first served and just like the timing of this program. So my so it looks like in as as written before us, it's the preliminary application would be during the thirty day collection period. And so when is that going to be? That's going to be like March, right?
Correct. So if the vote is successful, we would put together our notices with the cash payouts, and that would be at least a thirty day period. So yeah, between January to March in that timeframe.
So I my preference would be to do the preliminary application prior to the collection period, just sooner, because my prediction with this whole thing is that there's going to be, I mean, no one's no one's been successful to get into this program and we're we're expanding the income limits. But I would like to have the the application include a you know, a the ability to ask for an exception, like let's say you have, I don't know, a second house that's more that's one point one million, but for some there's there's situations here where I think it's going to go beyond it, and we don't really know what the right guidelines are going to be. So I think that in the application, there should be an option to ask for an exception. And then that way, that'll kind of help us because we don't have to grant the exception, but it'll give us the ability to figure out what the right criteria is going to be, because we don't want a situation where nobody is eligible for this program. So I would I would be interested in doing this preliminary application as soon as possible with a deadline, not first come, first serve. And then giving having a a request for an exception that staff could review, and then if to make the exception that could come to the city council with like confidentially without the names, but with the the situation, because I just I feel like without that process, we're not going to really know what the needs are, because I've talked to different residents, and and there's still uncertainty about whether they're going to meet all this all this criteria. So I'm open to what my colleagues think about. Think about that.
It does make sense because the sooner we know, the better, because we'll know if we funded it properly. I don't know. When do we do? What are we doing mid year budget? March? March, yeah. So that might work out. So if we're off, you know, we're off one way or the other, we know.
What do you think, Bob?
Well, I don't think you're going to sell bonds until April or May, right? Probably. On the on the one we're talking about, I mean, it'll vary district to district, but the first one up, I guess, would be Woods Cove if it passes.
Correct. So if Woods Cove passes, we'd be looking at April or so for selling bonds.
Yeah. So I think you've got some time in there to get the applications in. I think I agree that you ought to just start soliciting them, assuming it passes right after December twelfth, right?
And then can can we have a deadline in in January? So we have all them in, and we know, you know, what's before us. So it's not just an ongoing thing of more and more. Is that would that work?
Yeah, we can send letters out and with deadlines and dates in there, so folks can receive it, and they're aware of when they need to get the applications in.
The preliminary application, right?
Correct.
That way, we they might not necessarily, like if they did an exception and we didn't grant it, it wouldn't mean that they're entitled to it. It just they get that in there.
Correct.
And then the final thing is, so there's this, there could be situations in which, you know, so in this, the income limit is for one person household would be a hundred twenty three thousand. So hypothetically, if there's someone who makes a hundred thirty thousand, my my proposal is one of the exceptions. So in Manhattan Beach, they have like an income based repayment. So if hypothetically, you have someone who makes a hundred thirty thousand, which is just seven thousand over it. If they we could for for incomes that are over this amount, and this could be an exception that people could ask for, so we wouldn't necessarily grant it, but we could do two two percent of that income. So like, you know, two percent of a hundred thirty thousand would be twenty six hundred. So if the average assessment's thirty five hundred in that situation, the resident would pay twenty six hundred, and then the city would take on the other nine hundred. Because I feel like otherwise, you're kind of screwed if you if you're just like a couple thousand over the line. And then it would also solve for the problem of if you make like two hundred thousand, you're probably not your that that two percent threshold would mean that that the city won't even pay for any of it. If your assessment's thirty five hundred, she'd be over it. So I don't know what what you think about.
Too complicated.
Too complicated.
Yeah, too complicated.
Yeah.
Because that's Here's what I would say to you. If you really want to do that, go to the moderate plus twenty percent.
I like that.
About the number.
That's a good idea.
It's just too complicated. And splitting payment.
That's a really good idea. So okay.
Okay. Any other comment?
So the applicant be informed of the cost of the loan?
Yeah, we we can provide annual breakdowns for for the applicants as far as what the loan would have looked like. But yeah, we will have all information to them so they understand.
Do we have any idea of what the bond cost interest is going to be roughly?
Markets are always changing. As of last week, I was told a conservative estimate was five point eight percent.
So it could be seven percent with the one point added then. And so compounded over twenty years, it's could be three hundred for eighty thousand dollars could be about three hundred and fifty thousand. So people should be made aware of it.
Yeah, I'm sure we could do examples of the loan. What it would accrue to. People always have the right to pay it off. So it's not like you you know, have to let it accrue. All right. Any other final comments on this? So I think what were the changes? Alex, you're saying moderate plus twenty percent. We had the discussion earlier about the primary residence of the on the sale of transfer, right, Megan? And then the the income limit, the spouse or child or grandchild that's inheriting, if they don't satisfy the income limit, then they would have to start paying in five years, we said. So.
Right.
Okay.
And then.
What we would do is if there's a motion, second, if there's a vote, I would humbly suggest that the item would be approved in principle pursuant to the terms that you've agreed upon and would return to you by way of a consent calendar so that we can memorialize the wise changes that you've made to the to the program.
Okay, and you got the life insurance or and then the the changing the date. So it's it would be like instead of the thirty day collection period, it'd be prior to that.
We're all going to we're all going to watch these deliberations again. We'll have them all, I promise.
Okay. Thank you. Move the move with the the changes that were discussed.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Pierre. Good job on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, that'll then take us to item nine. This was an item that I asked to be placed on the agenda. I think councils all had a chance to read it, but it's reconsideration of the October twenty four, twenty twenty three approval to remove the lemon scented gum tree located three eighty seven El Camino Del Mar. And the purpose really for purposes of not necessarily deciding how we're going to whether we're going to change our our conclusion, but for gathering more information. In particular, level three risk assessment and the root radar analysis for the trees. So I guess I'd ask if there are any questions, and then we can go to public comment on this.
I have some questions for Matthew. Can you have Matthew?
Okay, yeah, Matthew, Mayor Protem has some questions, I think.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
So will this come back? If this is approved, will the tree come back to us based on what we learned from that tier three?
Yeah, so it this would only if if approved by council, this would direct staff to go out and gather that data, do do a do a further analysis with the root radar, and it would come back to council for determination.
Yeah, Matthew, I just have a question. Sorry, I just have a question for you. Have you ever done this ground penetrating radar studies?
I've first of all, good evening, Mayor Whelan, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, Matthew Barker, City Arbors, and with me is Riza Jafari, Deputy Director of Public Works. I've taken a number of continuing education classes on ground penetrating radar, spoke to some of the pioneers of the technology and arbor culture. But I've never personally performed the analysis myself.
How much does it cost to get one of those machines, do you think?
And that's something.
Any idea?
That's something I'd have to look into you and come back.
Okay, no, that's all. That's all. I'm just curious. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions before we open up? Okay, then I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter can come forward.
Hi again. I didn't wish everyone happy Thanksgiving. Sorry about that. I lived for twenty three years at three seventy one El Camino Del Mar. My den was about thirty feet from this tree. My neighbors, here's a letter from I sent to the the city council people. I sent to the city council about a week ago. My den was about thirty feet from this tree. Probably so I walked by the tree for twenty three years, a couple million times. I drove by the trees today just to check them out. They all look really healthy and well. But one of the things I spoke about with my neighbor who sold the house in two thousand eighteen, roughly two thousand eighteen, she built the house and lived there for about forty years. She used to steam clean her sidewalk and roof. And when they cleaned the roof, it would come over on my property, and I would spend the time and clean my side up after they finished cleaning the roof. The big issue, you know, the the old landlord of the house, owner of the house, was, you know, cleaning the sidewalk and the roof. And obviously, if you look at the tree physically, and I've seen it react to the sixty five mile an hour winds, we storms we've had in the past, it withstood the last hundred years. So if you read my letter to the city council, to each city council person, it'll explain how I feel about the tree and it's staying the way it is. And then lastly, two days ago, there was an article in the Time Magazine about how America is making tree equity climate solution for cities, cooling cities, a vital part of the world lowering the cool the temperatures of the world and that trees are a key solution. So here's an article from two days ago for each of So here's an article from two days ago for each of the, from Time Magazine. It's interesting. Just pull it up on the internet, but it's pretty amazing what trees do. And lastly, I was very fortunate to be in the canyon when Donald Brenn signed the paperwork where he helped, he was instrumental in saving Liquid Beach Canyon, as well as Crystal Cove, as well as a couple other places in the city to make it a more beautiful city. And I just hope you continue doing what you're doing. You all are doing an amazing job to keeping this city a beautiful city. And I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Anne Kristof. I really appreciate Mayor Wayland putting this back on the agenda and answering the pleas of the people that came under public comment last time. Really appreciate the council taking another look at this tree and doing a detailed level of analysis. I think it's a prototype for the level of study that we need to do over some of these tree problems. To answer Sue's question, I was talking to Peter Harnish, who is the person that did the peer review report. And he's one of two people in the whole state that does this root penetrating analysis for trees. That equipment is also used for archaeology and other subterranean objects that they might be looking for. But there's particular software that's used to analyze the root patterns. And he explained to me that, you know, the data you get has to be, that there's a big learning process to know how to interpret the data and then present the diagrams that mean something to the ordinary person. So I think we're very fortunate to have him actually, one of the two people that can do this, living in Laguna Beach. And we did not know him before this whole incident happened. And we just inquired about root penetrating radar because I'd heard about it in conjunction with an archaeology proposal I was working on. And it just happened that he lives here. So I think he's a great resource because he is also a consulting arborist. So I really appreciate your taking this several steps forward. And I hope you'll pass this tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Bob Borthwick. I was involved with the original landscape scene in Kiwi's resource document back in 95. I was a consultant on that and then worked on the current one that was done a few years ago. So I've been looking around at trees in town for decades. And those trees in that location were always considered a very iconic planting of trees in town. And I think it's something that's an asset, not just to those neighbors in that cul-de-sac or that roundabout, but really the whole town. So I would like to again thank Mayor Wayland for relooking at this. I think something that significant, we need to make sure that we've, you know, looked under every rock before we take the tree out. And so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker. Anybody else in the chambers? Cheryl, I think we have one more speaker here in chambers.
Okay.
Pat Gallus again. I've been in this town 50 years. I've seen numerous trees fall, just fall when there's a heavy wind, fall when there's no wind. I don't know what the liability is on the city from this particular tree. If it falls within the next five years or 10 years, falls on a gentleman's house or an individual, what's the liability to the city? We all want to keep as many trees as you can and so forth, but you've got to draw the line somewhere. You hire an expert on arborist and he recommends certain things and other people want to fight it, which is fine, they can do that, it just costs more money to the city. Maybe you need to get some type of a deal where you can use this radar penetrating thing on every tree in the community. I don't know. But trees have a lifespan. And a lot of these eucalyptus trees are huge and their lifespan's coming to an end. And I just hope no one gets hurt and we do the right thing. And hopefully it doesn't cost the city a fortune. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers here in the chambers? All right. Anyone online, Cheryl?
I have a couple hands, Mayor. Okay, first one is phone number ending in 5188, star six, time to mute yourself.
Anne Kane, President of Village Laguna. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Village Laguna is grateful to Mayor Wayland for putting the lemon-scented gum tree on the City Council agenda for reconsideration. We appreciate that the mayor was willing to listen to the input from residents and another highly respected arborist. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Next speaker is Ruben Flores. Go ahead, Ruben.
Good evening, council again, and lawyer and city manager. We are so thankful for these large trees. Pat, there's no real reason to be fearful of trees, just as there's no real reason to be, live in fear of dogs or of old people or of cars. Many of these things are just part of life and we appreciate them and live with them and grant them their honor and their dignity. I'm not sure what the impetus for the negative characteristics or the diagnosis of this tree is. Is it just because it exists where it is because there's four or five more of them there? And if you start looking closely at these, as I said earlier today on Broadway, we have another 15, 20 of them. Where do you stop? And if it's because they were poorly treated when sidewalks were poured around them and they left them very small tree wells, it's really not the fault of the tree. It's the fault of the humans. And what can we do now to help them rather than to look to them later on as bad elements of a town? And we think that perhaps this is something that was only done decades ago, but we see that a very, very large tree, tory pine, was planted on the corner of Thalia and South Coast Highway in modern times, as in last three years. And this tree's overall mass will probably be triple the size of the eucalyptus in question. So this isn't a matter of poor planning, poor judgment in its initial implementation. What it's a matter of now is, are we a city who honors and acts with respect and dignity towards these giants in our town? These trees are what distinguish our town from other towns along the coast. People come to Laguna Beach because of the beautiful trees. How we treat our trees is very much significant of how we treat each other and how we treat the town. Please recall too, that this lemon-scented gum is our city tree. So for us to unduly remove a city tree, that is the city tree, would be ever so sad. And it would set a precedent for who knows what in the future. I thank you for being lovers of landscape, horticulture and trees. Thank you.
Any other speakers, Cheryl?
No other hands, Mayor.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. I have some comments that I'll offer at some point, but do other council members want to go first? All right. Well, a couple of things. One, I think that, yeah, as I said in the agenda bill, based on the testimony that we had last time, I think gathering additional information, given the nature of this tree, the location, the history of the tree, makes sense. There's been, I've seen some emailed suggestions about analyzing adjacent, a couple of the adjacent trees. I would be okay with that. I do want to underscore that I'm just looking for additional information that I think will hopefully improve the analysis. I'm not at all prejudging the outcome. I'm not saying it's going to change the decision we made. And I particularly want to say that, you know, in bringing this back, nothing here should be interpreted as my lacking confidence or in our arborist who I think did an analysis, reached a conclusion. We may end up in the same place at the end, but I don't think, I don't think getting any, getting additional information for us to all deliberate on is, I think it is a good decision in this times, at this point. So I'm hoping we could, if council supports gathering the additional information, we can do it quickly and then bring it back to council quickly and make a final decision as to what we want to do on this.
I support your recommendation. I'm wondering if this might eventually lead to developing a policy in the future that if the arborist identifies a specific, I don't know, criteria, then the, and if a tree is being considered for removal, we could automatically go to a tier three testing just to avoid, you know, needing to come to council. I think staff probably has already been thinking about that. So this might be a little bit redundant, but at least it's something that now the community could, could be made aware of if we're all up to that, if we want to ask staff to come back with such a policy. And I, you know, I ran into a woman the other day. She wasn't talking about this particular tree. I just thought this was interesting. She's from Seattle and she was on some, a council up there. And she just was talking about trees and, you know, her being excited about moving to town. And she said that they were actually, had done some research and found that the trees in their commercial environments or neighborhoods had a positive impact on the retail environment. So I just thought that was interesting and we could look into that.
I got a question.
Can I ask a question? So Mark, did you, when you said that it would be a tier three, but the arborist could make the call based on the tier three, it wouldn't be appealed to the council? Is that your, okay. So then could we apply, would that apply to this one, this instance as well?
I'm not sure how that works if we could, because the staff is going to need to bring this back to us, correct? In, to actually vote on a potential policy? So I need some guidance.
That's what was contemplated, yes.
Right.
But hypothetically, you could say that this could be, do a tier three and only come back if staff makes a determination that their, that the recommendation has changed to remove the tree?
Mayor and council, I think under your existing policy, it defers to the council for a decision. Your action could be, if you'd like though, that based on the outcome of the tree, to direct staff to take, sorry, the outcome of the tier three. Testing is direct staff to make a specific action and bring back a policy that would be consistent with that. That's, that could be a motion that you put forward tonight. If you just operate under your existing policy without any other, any other action, then presumably the policy requires it to come back. So it would just need to be very specific in your motion if you wanted some other, if you wanted to provide other specific direction.
Well, I have a comment.
Do that later.
Yeah, I agree. Mark, I agree with your comments. But I, I, so first of all, when we have someone look at this tree, if we're going to do a tier three assessment, I want Matthew to be involved so he can be there. So that's number one. Number two is, in particular, a tree that's across the street from the Englanders and it's by that Tudor house, that tree needs to be evaluated. So I've had some complaints, some of these people in the neighborhood come to my gym. So when I go to the gym, instead of working out, we started talking about these trees. So anyway, they've been complaining because they said they've had, a big branch went down on that tree. So if you take a look at that tree as well, I think it needs to be looked at. I also wonder how quickly we can get this done because we got this tree evaluated in April. And, you know, it's end of November now. So if we could get this done in the next, I don't know, two weeks or something, some reasonable timeframe, that would be good. Personally, I'm worried about the weather this, we're going to get, supposedly going to get a lot of rain. Get a lot of rain, we may get a lot of winds. I'm really kind of worried about this just in general. So if the quicker we can get this done. But I would like to get a policy where, like, you know, I don't want to have four meetings on a tree. We got a lot of things to do here, so if we can have a streamlined policy that satisfies everyone, that'd be good.
One last thought. There was some, the gentleman who owns the house next to the tree did have an idea. If it is determined that the tree is healthy, he had talked about maybe doing some pruning, I'll call it, to the tree to further eliminate any potential hazards as far as falling branches. So I would hope that that could be looked at as well.
Yeah, thanks for, Mark. As I mentioned here in the second paragraph, I agree with you. I think the root, the root analysis, the static poll test and then recommendations for tree pruning, I do think that needs to be looked at, particularly the limbs that are protruding towards the house.
Thank you, Bob and Mr. Englander for your flexibility as well in this. I agree that this needs a level three assessment. It's a very valuable tree to the community. The tree looks to be very healthy at this point, if you do a visual examination of it. But if it turns out that it's not, we'll have to make that decision in the next meeting or the following one when the results come back. So I do support seeking level three assessment and thank Bob for bringing it forward and for Mr. Englander's for his flexibility in allowing us to do that. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, I appreciate this coming back. I, you know, I spent a lot of time on this issue when it came before us and read closely the report of the arborist, read the report of the other arborist who didn't do a risk assessment on it, but he provided some insight. Asked a lot of questions to Matthew on it. And, you know, I think there's, there's been a lot of public comment about the importance of trees and I couldn't agree more. But our main responsibility here is public safety. And if, you know, I don't know the Englanders, but, but to me, the idea of any of our residents being exposed to a tree that our expert arborist is saying is dangerous is not something that, that I'm interested in. Like I said, I asked a lot of questions to Matthew and I think his analysis was sound. And, you know, I read all the public comments and none of those changed my perspective. So I'm, I'm not supportive of another risk assessment. I think it's better for experts to make these types of decisions than politicians. Because like I said, it's not about whether we like trees or not. It's about whether the tree is a public safety threat. And so I'm supportive of the idea of going forward, doing a tier three risk assessment, but not coming to the council. I'd be supportive of that. But I'm not supportive of doing a level three risk assessment on this tree because I think, you know, based on careful research and expert analysis from our arborist, I believe that the tree poses a public safety risk. And I just, I, I wouldn't feel right going in the opposite direction. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll ask the city manager whether you have any sense of timing on this? If we go to the.
I certainly didn't predetermine what your decision would be this evening, but I, just for proper planning, I had spoken with staff, you know, some weeks ago that if this were to come back, be ready to, be ready to move swiftly. And we are ready to move as swiftly as possible.
Okay. But certainly would hope we could get somebody engaged quickly and get it done, as Sue was saying, in the next few weeks. I mean, if we're going to do it, I think it'd be nice to get it done this year.
Yeah.
Understood.
All right. And so I would make a motion that we direct staff to obtain an independent arborist report for a level three risk assessment to include the ground penetrating root radar root mapping, performance of a static poll test and recommendations. root mapping, performance of a static poll test and, and recommendations for tree pruning in order to provide additional information for analysis. And I will add to that, that the city arborist would be involved in terms of participating in the process.
Who does the pruning, Bob? Who's going to do the pruning, Sean?
We contract, we contract that out, right? Yes, we do. And Matthew would, he would manage the contract, but obviously be seeking the advice of the independent arborist.
So is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries for one. Okay, thank you, council. And thank you, I'll echo George's thank you to the Englanders who are now are here tonight for their willingness to allow this additional analysis to occur. All right, number 10. This is from council members Orgel and Weiss. Turn it over to the two of you for this one, unless Sean, you have some, okay?
This is a request to ask staff to look into the city joining the Natural Communities Coalition. Just briefly, the purpose of this organization, it exists to provide regional protection and recovery of multiple species and habitat while allowing compatible land use and appropriate development. I've talked to several folks that are on the Laguna Canyon Conservancy and of course, Mary Fageris from the Coastal Greenbelt Authority. And there's a list here of, of all of the cities that are currently a part of this organization. I did have a brief conversation with our interim city manager, Sean, because Irvine is a member of the, of the organization. And it just seemed like it made sense for us to at least explore and to better understand what our involvement would be, the pros and cons of our participating and joining this organization. So that's what I'm asking.
Okay, thank you. Any questions before we open it up for discussion? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to comment on item 10? Cheryl, anybody online?
I have one hand raised right now, mayor.
Okay.
Actually, two hands. Phone number ending in nine, five, seven, three, star six to unmute yourself, nine, five, seven, three.
Good evening, Mayor Wayland, Mayor Pro Tem Kemp, and city council member, members. I'm Jackie Cordero, interim executive director for Laguna Canyon Foundation. I would like to comment on agenda item number 10. Laguna Canyon Foundation is in support of the item and encourages, encourages the city to start communicating and working with the Natural Communities Coalition and signing into the NCCP, HCP. In the 1990s, Orange County land managers such as County of Orange, City of Anaheim, City of Huntington Beach, and City of Newport and others signed onto the plan protecting for open space and federally and state endangered species. The plan is 75-year state and federal permitting, providing land owner signatories, assurances that if they follow the plan, they will not be affected by future changes to the State and Federal Endangered Species Act, Act before the term of the permit. Participating landowners receive assurances that future identified infrastructure development projects and their maintenance within the reserve system and outside the reserve system would not be interrupted by future listings of endangered threatened species, as long as the habitat impacts are within the T credits granted. Protection of more than 30 targeted and identified species to help ensure preservation for a wide variety of other plant and animal species in the habitats within the reserve. Finally, land management, monitoring, and project support and expertise is available through the participation of the NCC Board of Directors. Finally, I'm also offering Laguna Canyon Foundation as a resource and support to the city while we, while you undertake this venture. Thank you for considering item number 10, and thank you and have a great Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Penelope Milne. Go ahead, Penny.
Thank you very much. Penelope Milne, president of Can Do. I just wanted to say briefly, I know the measure tonight is to initiate a staff investigation. So all of this information will no doubt come back to the council anyway. But the, at least part of what the city would get, there's many things we might get from participation in, with the, from joining the NCC. But part of that could be money-saving advantages like better access to grants. And the city already has some endeavors underway that could, with open space preservation and, and management that could profit from that better access to grants. Also, from the, with the NCC, we might get better access to information. And again, we might be able to leverage that and reduce some of the city's expenditures on things like mapping or studies by being able to take advantage of information that the NCC gathers, or at least we might be able to get cost sharing. So again, I know staff will investigate and bring back more specific and authoritative versions of that. But I just wanted to say that while there are certainly sort of ethical and philosophical reasons for getting more robust protection for things we all value, like wild places and wild creatures, there may also be some practical, you know, there, there's money and reduction of expense potentially available too. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers? Cheryl?
No, their hand, oh, wait, hold on, wait, somebody's hand popped up and went down again. Wait, I'll hurry and get her. Mary, go ahead. You can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wayland, members of the council, Mary Fageris, 1561 Morningside Drive, 52 resident, year resident of Laguna Beach, founding executive director of Laguna Canyon Foundation in 1990. I would like to thank council members Orgel and Weiss for putting this item, step one, on your agenda tonight. I remember just a little bit of history. I remember talking, Liz Brown, I talking with Monica Floring at the Irvine Company, when the Irvine Company was just working with the state to help make this all throughout California, these reserves. And Liz and I looked at each other and said, this is a good idea. This is an extra layer of protection of open space. Our city has a remarkable number of acres of open space, both within Laguna Coast Wilderness Park and within our city. Our coastal canyons are very precious. This, this is just a win-win situation. So I encourage you to go ahead and approve staff to look at all the pros and cons. And I, I'm just very pleased. I've waited for this day to happen for so many years. So thank you very much. And I look forward to moving ahead. And if I can be of any historical resource, I'm very definitely available. Thank you and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
No, their hands, mayor.
Okay. Close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
I just had a couple of comments.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I did meet with Jim Soluntich, who's the longtime director of the organization. And, and, you know, there's, I think there's some benefits that may apply to us with what Penny said in terms of grant applications that the coalition can work with us on getting for our landscapes and to do rehabilitation, habitat restoration, mapping of privately-owned parcels that we don't know about and might be a priority for us to, to enshrine as a open space. So I think there are other benefits as well. And I think, I'm not saying we should join, but I'm saying, let's look at this, have staff look at it and give us the good and the bad, if there is any. And let's examine it to see what benefits it can apply to Laguna Beach.
Okay. Any other questions or, I mean, comments from council? I'm supportive of moving ahead to evaluate along the line, the pros and cons, along the lines of what council members Orgel and Weiss have outlined. So I don't know if there's a, is there a motion or?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward.
Okay, I can make a motion to request that staff evaluate joining the Natural Communities Coalition.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you for bringing that. Okay, item 11. This is second item from me this evening. Parking solutions for city staff and users of Laguna Beach Community and Recreation Center. This is the, you know, former St. Catherine School site that we purchased almost a year ago in December. And I know there's the ongoing master facilities plan. You know, we put together an interim use and there has been some interim use of the facility taking place. But clearly, we're going to need, in order to fully deploy the 40,000 square feet that are down there, we're going to need additional parking beyond the, I think it's roughly 42 spaces that are down there currently. So the purpose of this agenda item, and there's so much lead time associated with all of these kind of efforts, is to see if council would be willing to direct staff to evaluate, you know, all the potential options for parking solutions down at the recreation center, which might be onsite, might be offsite. You know, we've talked previously about some offsite, potential offsite parking down there. You've got Rubies next door. So I'm not trying to limit it to any particular solution, but I would just ask that staff kind of look at both onsite and offsite solutions as, for future consideration by council to bring back to us. So that's the purpose of the agenda item. Any questions before I go to the public? Okay, anyone, any, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody here wishing to comment on this item? Cheryl, anybody online?
I have one hand raised. Chris Katzmannus, go ahead.
Good evening again. I think it's a good idea to have staff take a look at it, but I hope we don't see another $50,000 or $100,000 contract to have an outside person look at it. Surely, the people on staff should be qualified enough to do a first pass in terms of what's available. And then after that, come to the city council and get direction. And at that time, if it, if it requires it, you can go ahead and hire a consultant. But I just see everything that we do like this ends up being, you know, a, you know, hiring consultants to do the work. And I hope, and I think we do have the qualified people on staff to do this preliminary work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And any other speakers, Cheryl?
No, their hands, mayor.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
I approve the recommended action. You have a question?
I have a second comment. The, the one, I'm supportive of this. I do think I've talked to some residents who live right there. So they see what's going on there. And I think the parking is underutilized right now. And I think like, as Bob notes in his memo, it's going to be more utilized when the staff are there. But my, I think that there could be more, more programming even before this parking solution comes into place. I think there's, there's room for more programming and more use of, of the gym. So I would just make that, make that comment, but I'm supportive of the recommended action.
Okay. Sean, is this something council, I'm sorry, staff can look at and come back to us with recommendations on it? I hadn't included in here the concept of hiring a consultant, but.
We're, we're happy to take a first pass at it and let you know if, if we need more resources to pursue something larger or grander.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion from Sue to adopt the recommended action. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that'll take us to item 12. This is from council member Weiss, requesting for city council consideration of establishing a policy for rotating mayor and mayor pro tem assignments. George?
Thank you, mayor. I just have a real short statement to make. It's, it's been a longstanding tradition that council members rotate into the positions of mayor and mayor pro tem. That time-honored tradition continued until the last five or six years. And I believe it's best to go back to that tradition that served Laguna well, rather than positions being decided by the majority of the council. It's a ceremonial role, and I hope we can agree to do that tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions before we go to public comment? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the chamber wishing to speak on this item, come forward?
Hello, Bob Orthwick again. So, you know, I, I really support this idea. I, I was a good friend of Verna Rollinger's and I served on some committees, council committees at her request. And I always felt bad that she didn't get a chance to be mayor. And she paid her dues. She was duly elected and it seemed like that, that was just not the right thing. So on her behalf, I'd like to say, I hope you go along with this as Councilman Weiss suggested. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, city council. Chris Qualter, speaking for himself. George Weiss wants to be mayor. I understand that. That's what this is all about. It's certainly not about an imaginary tradition that says anyone who is elected to the council gets to be mayor. If that were the case, Peter Blake would have been mayor. Our mayors have always been selected by a majority of their peers. That's the tradition. So the question of whether George Weiss should be mayor is not in the hands of his supporters or his detractors. It's entirely up to you. Personally, I have issues with, with George and don't wish to see him as mayor. I think he's denounced his colleagues to the district attorney a few times too often. I think he ignores the advice of the city attorney. I think he wants to know the names of city employees who have criticized him. He's been censured by his colleagues for violating the Brown Act, after which he continued to violate.
Can I?
No, you cannot. You cannot. You cannot. Point of order. I am talking.
Point of order here.
You're interrupting.
Can I, can I please, this, this agenda item isn't about George Weiss. It's about its rotation of the city council. I have never.
I understand.
Excuse me.
It's about the rotation of the city council, not about George Weiss becoming mayor. And I object to personal comments that Chris is making based on this item being not about me. It's not about.
I don't know who else it is about, if it's not about you, George.
Well, Chris, go ahead. But it's a general item on rotating mayor.
I understand that. But the tradition is that the mayor is selected by his or her peers. That's the tradition. It's been working very well. I particularly, I find it rather offensive, the insinuation that somehow the fact that Bob has been mayor for many times is, is somehow suspicious or somehow a bad idea. Or I just find the whole thing ridiculous. There is nothing wrong with the tradition we have. It's worked just fine. And I would leave it the way it is and let this thing go.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
And, and can I get my slide? Thank you. Good evening, council and city attorney and city manager. Thank you for, for agreeing to this discussion tonight. As I, I've given the city clerk and a sample, an example of a, an ordinance on mayor and mayor pro tem succession, line of succession planning. And then I have a slide here I wanted to show you. The slide shows that since 2013, council member Wayland, elected in 2012 for the first time, has held the mayor and the mayor pro tem positions and/or the mayor pro tem positions seven times in 10 years. 2018 elected council member Kemp has held positions three times in barely five years. What appears here to be a lead position monopoly over the last 10 years by some is causing serious constituent concern. What appears here to be a lead position monopoly over the last 10 years by some is causing serious constituent concerns. While public service commitments are appreciated, and we do appreciate all you do, controlling trends like this aren't. It sends the message that either we don't have capable electives to serve us as mayor or mayor pro temp, or other electives are purposely being shut out. Whatever the reason, many Laguna Beach stakeholders feel it's time for council to determine and define the order and the line of succession. Many cities have ordinance that outline how city council's line of succession will be conducted. An impressive example is the one I just handed you, and it's from the city of Rancho Mirage. It specifies criteria for serving as mayor and mayor pro temp. B1 of its policy states, the city, the council member with the longest continuous service on the city council, without having served as mayor, shall be appointed mayor. B2 on the document you have states, the council member with the second largest, longest continuous service on the city council, without serving, having served as mayor, shall be appointed as mayor pro temp. Given our concerning political environment and the edge holding these positions have for council members in elections, I ask that this council create a council succession policy with specific criteria to ensure equal and fair opportunities for all of our electives as soon as possible, like right now. And in the meantime, please do not repeat the prior assignment trend we see here. This shows that since 20, Bob was appointed in 2012, from 2013 on, he has held this position with our former council member Steve Victorow. And now it's been repeated with our council member Kempf. I think we really need to take a look at this pattern. And I also believe that we need to move forward with adopting city term limit, city council term limits, like the majority of other cities have done in Orange County. I think out of 34 cities, 30 have adopted council term limits. So the potential for city leader monopolies are managed and handled. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Michelle Monda. When I was in business school, I took a management class. And the management professor looked at all of us sitting in the seats, and he said, you know what? You're occupying a box right now called student. He said, don't think you're that great, because next year, there's going to be another group of people in that seat called students. I want you to understand this. This made such an impression on me, I'm relating this to you tonight. I want you to understand this, he said. No one is irreplaceable, and I don't want you to go into your careers thinking that you are the only one who can do your job. Because just like you will be replaced next year as students, you will be replaced in your job, and the company will go on. So that's the first point I have to make about relinquishing control to other people. The second point is that all of you were elected by all of us, some with a few more points. But you were all elected. You all represent some of the residents. You are disenfranchising a very large number of residents to not allow everyone to get a chance at being mayor or mayor pro temp. We, the residents, elected them, selected them, and now for you to close them out, based on what criteria I really have yet to fathom. But it is only the democratic thing, if we all have elected them, that they get their chance to push their agenda, whatever it is. Now about to shock you. You ready? Here's a bombshell, people. I think Peter Blake should have been a mayor. To have excluded him was exactly what I am against. This was undemocratic. Now, did I like him? Oh, you bet not. Do I think he would have self-destructed, and would he have been the worst mayor we ever had? You bet. But people elected him. He had every right to be mayor in his time, and you didn't allow that. And lastly, I'd like to thank Sue and Bob for their many years, according to the last slide, of public service. But it's time to move on, hand the baton to someone else, get this policy codified so that it doesn't happen again. I can understand it happening on a rare occasion like COVID or the blue bird slide. But to have this happen time and time again for the past 10 years, that Bob Wayland has been sitting up there, is not right. And Bob, I like you very much. That's not the point. It's time to get democratic and let the rest of the people have a shot at being mayor and mayor pro temp. And I'd like to thank you too for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
David Durneys, 23-year city resident. I've been here a few times based on issues we've had with process in the city. And I found, you know, in general, everybody here has been respectful and supportive of the things that I've wanted to bring to this council and to the board. I find it highly disrespectful that individuals in this community come up here and attack individuals at this board. The public interest that you serve is something that very few of us can afford and should be highly respected. And I've known a number of the other mayors in the past, Mayor Pearson, Mayor Boyd. They are all self-serving, oh, sorry, public servants who are the, there was a mental sit there, of the highest order, as all of you. And I think the point made was that everybody in this council should have at least an opportunity to serve as mayor and mayor pro temp. If you can change that policy, I would appreciate that consideration. And I think I represent the voice of many of the people in town as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sorry, three times in one night is probably too much. But I want to say to all of the city council people, you all have done an amazing job. George, you've done an amazing job. Mark, you've been on not too long. Bob, Sue, amazing. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Alex, you're new. But I'm going to give you a quick analogy. September 15, 2023, I spoke before, for the very first time in 13 years, to a federal judge. I was not allowed to speak to him, but I brought no lawyers. On the other side, nine lawyers. My point is, I persuaded the judge, and he allowed me to submit what I gave you tonight. My, Bob, you have been an amazing mayor. Sue, amazing job. But maybe the thought is, let's, I find when I listen to these city meetings, everyone's so angry. And I'm a little shameful to read the news this evening about what Tom Johnson wrote about Peter Blake. But maybe Bob and Sue, maybe more mentoring, and then someone gets a chance to be mayor and mayor pro temp. But it just seems like, like I agree with Alex, talking about a tree four times is kind of the definition of insanity. But, you know, I care about the tree. The tree was near my house, and I know the trees. But everyone, I got the opportunity in 13 years, and I believe I'm going to change something. And you don't know this, but my situation is very complicated. But $400 million is going to be returned to junior bondholders of HSBC Bank. And I was speaking with the chairman and executive chairman. I actually spoke three days ago with the chairman office of Bank of America. Issue is, my life is very complicated. I love this city. I love being here. I had a house here, been here for 30 years. And I just believe that, you know, everyone should have a chance. I got a chance, but I had to wait 13 years. And I also lost my houses I loved and never thought I would lose my house. And I miss my house. But my point of what I'm trying to say is everyone should be kind to one another. People shouldn't be so angry. There's too much anger. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Council, Tom Osborne. And I've had the privilege for 49 years of living in what I regard as the Athens of the Orange Coast. And as a retired history professor, to me, Athens was about democracy. And to me, the democratic process here for selecting a mayor and the person in line for that position would be to rotate that position explicitly. That would be the democratic solution. As I look around the world today, I see what I think probably all of you see, that one nation after another has moved in the direction of authoritarianism or autocracy. And most recently, Argentina has taken a step in that direction. And it's Turkey and many other countries, including our own country. If you've been following the Project 2025 of the Republican Party, that document has been covered in detail in The New York Times and in many other leading journals of opinion. It is absolutely chilling. Democracy starts at this level right here. And I think Laguna has, for the most part, furnished a good example of that. So I would urge you to make this a democratic process and explicitly call for a rotation of these two very important offices. And I thank our mayor, Bob Wayland, whom I've known for decades, and others who have served along with him for the job that they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Ginger Osborne, and I have been at this podium to speak for probably over the decades. And I have watched where the positions of mayor and mayor pro temp have alternated. And that, to me, seems fair. It gives everyone a chance at this position of responsibility and honor. And I urge you to go back to the process that was in place for a good many years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers in the chamber? Cheryl, some, oh, I'm sorry, I got one more here.
Pat Gallas again. This is my third time in one night, which is hard for me to believe, because this isn't my forte. There's five of you out here. Decide who the best person is for the job. That's the bottom line. It's been going on for a long time. If you think George is the best person, that's great. If you think Alex is, that's great also. Whatever you decide, I'm with you. And thanks again for your time.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl, do you have some speakers?
I have six hands raised, Mayor. First hand is Tom Gibbs. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The proposal that's being considered is contrary to the terms and intent of the city's law. Indeed, this proposal would effectively amend the law. The mayor is not just a title. Otherwise, if not important, the proponents of this would not be arguing for rotation. Why would it matter? The fact is, our mayor is a very important position for the city. The mayor is the figurehead. He does the state of the city address. He is at emergency events. He is the spokesman for the city when the city needs the leading spokesman. The mayor also runs city council meetings. He needs to be, he or she needs to be effective, orderly, and appear fair. Simply put, you need the best person for this job. Some are better than others. At times, there are divisive members on the city council that should not be mayor. At times, there are mayors who do not, simply do not have the temperament to be mayor, and they should not be mayor. And some simply do not have the qualities needed to represent the city. In any of these, we would not be well, or for, with any of these types of people, we would not be well-served by that person serving as mayor. Simply put, we need the most qualified. So how do you choose? It can be by the people, where like in Los Angeles, the position is voted on at a general election. That is not our system. It can be on a rotation as being proposed today. But that also is not our system and has the pitfalls I've described. The system that we do have is where the city council votes the mayor in a democratic matter, much like the Congress votes the Speaker of the House. Not that the country chooses the Speaker of the House in an election. That is our system, and it has stood the test of time. We have been well-served by Bob, for example, we have been well-served by Bob Wayland, not because of how he votes, but because of his temperament. He is a great mayor, and we should welcome his continuing as long as he is willing to serve. And I think the fact that he has been voted on is not a flaw in the system. It is an attribute of the system that recognizes people who would best represent our city and best represent and run our city council meetings. Thanks for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is George Dubin. Go ahead, George.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. George Dubin with you. The role of mayor is a position of great responsibility, as been stated by previous speakers. It requires a deep understanding of all the operations that keep the city running smoothly. It is a position that is earned not by a random selection, but is earned by giving and showing respect to not only fellow council members, but also to every staff member and employee of the city, even if our positions differ. Many in this community thought civility would return to council chambers after our last election cycle. That has not happened. Councilman Blake was disallowed the opportunity to serve as mayor during his four-year term for reasons I'm not privy to. The position of mayor must be earned, not an automatic appointment. We deserve a mayor who is not only qualified, but who shows and receives respect. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Chris Katzmannis. Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening again. I am in full support of George Weiss's, you know, vote to go ahead and rotate. You know, in the past, I guess it turns out, eight-plus years, we've seen, you know, Mayor Wayland be either mayor pro temp or mayor. And then in the last four years, there's been a ping-pong between Mayor Wayland and Sue Kempf. And it would be okay, it would be palatable, if we had not had some very major missteps. The first misstep was, of course, when Blake came onto the council, there was an automatic 3-2 vote that would override anything that the other two members wanted, period. You remember what Tony Ismann said, she can count to three. The one thing that really sticks in my mind was during the selection process for the city manager a couple of years ago, I can remember distinctly during a council meeting, Blake saying, I don't care who you bring in, I'm going to vote for Sheree. Now, that was a clear, clear violation of the conflict of interest laws, and he should have been recused from voting for the mayor, for the city manager, yet he was not. And who was responsible for that? It was the, in my view, the mayor and the mayor pro temp had to get with his city attorney and get him recused. So anyway, what happened was, on a 3-2 vote initially, I believe, I don't think Tony or George would have voted for Sheree, she was selected, even though there were many, there had to have been more suitable candidates, or the recruiter wasn't doing a good job. Then we had blatant favoritism of developer and people that were, had, the projects had had friends in high places. And again, nothing was done in that area. But the most egregious miscarriage of justice, in my view, was when, during the last year, during this year, I should say, when Mayor Wayland was the mayor and a civil dispute, and it was a civil dispute, came up as to who could operate the Hotel Laguna. Mayor Wayland, the city manager, the city attorney, and the mayor pro temp had the legal documents that show that the rightful owners were mom. that the rightful owners were were mom and and Mo Hornicker had nothing to do with it. So when he had illegal trespassing and destruction of property, it was no longer an issue, a civil issue. Had someone like George been mayor, he would have demanded that that the city manager do the right thing and the city attorney do the right thing and arrest the people who violated the law and committed felonies. And I think that's why we need to have a rotation of mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is phone number ending in six two four eight, star six to unmute yourself, six two four eight.
Good evening, City Council. This is Jerome Pudwell. I wish to lodge my support for rotating and sharing the titles of mayor and mayor pro tem with all council members, not just the select few. It is vital for the full representation of all residents who have voted for their select council members. Monopolization of power by any voting majority is a corruption of democracy and lends itself to even greater corruption. Council members, you know what the right thing to do is. Please do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Lorraine Laguna. Go ahead, Lorraine.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you so much for having this on the agenda, George Weiss. I'd like to say that there are many qualified council members up there, serving on the dais now, and it would be nice to have a change. We have three other members up there who have not had that opportunity. And I definitely would like to support and see a change and see these other council members have the their ability and their opportunity to shine. They were elected by the people, and the people therefore trust in them. Now granted, we can all argue the point that Peter Blake clearly did not have the temperament, or the knowledge, or the experience, or anything. This is this is a fact. But I I truly believe that Mr. Blake would have denied or declined that opportunity, even if you had given it to him. So again, let's rotate the mayor's position, clearly because we have three council members up there who have not had the opportunity. And I, for one, look forward to watching and see them lead. So thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers, Cheryl?
One more hand. Gene Felder, go ahead.
Mayor Whelan, my name is Gene Felder. I live at 2680 Park Avenue. I belong to a number of different organizations. I'd like to address the council as an individual. I do support the rotation of the mayor and mayor pro tem positions among the city council members. Neither Mayor Whelan nor Sue Kemp as mayor did an acceptable job of implementing the Laguna Beach policy of civility and decorum. The policy includes, quote, embrace respectful disagreement and dissent as democratic rights that are inherent components of an inclusive public process in tools for forging sound decisions and allow all members of the public to speak without intimidation or interruption, and provide fair and equal treatment for all persons and matters coming before city bodies, unquote. Apparently, they chose its superior to obtain Councilmember Peter Blake's vote rather than the city council meetings being conducted amicably, choosing continually to allow Councilmember Blake to mistreat fellow council members as well as the members of the public. It was Whelan and Kemp's responsibility to enforce the civility policy, but they failed. As mayor, Sue Kemp allowed Peter Blake to interrupt and mistreat people. And when Councilmember Weiss would make a point of order, she would say, George, be quiet. You're just as bad. So in conclusion, I do support the rotation of the mayor and mayor pro tem positions among the city council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, Cheryl?
I do have another hand. Phone number ending in five one eight eight, star six to unmute yourself, five one eight eight.
Ann Kane, President Village Laguna. Good evening, everyone. Village Laguna is in support of this recommendation that the city council reestablished the longstanding policy of rotation of mayor and mayor pro tem assignments. The rotation has been a Laguna Beach tradition until recently, and it should be reinstated. While Councilmember Weiss has brought this to the attention of the council, as a matter of principle, we hope that the council will not only adopt the policy, but implement it in your next reorganization meeting in December. And that would mean that Councilmember Weiss would become our next mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers, Cheryl?
No other hands, Mayor. Oh, wait, wait, we do. Oh, no.
This will be our last speaker.
Okay. All right. Ed Steinfeld, go ahead. You can unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you, City Council. The the job of mayor is a responsibility. It's not a ceremonial position. And regardless of what you decide tonight, when deciding to put Mr. Weiss in as mayor, he has neither the skill nor the temperament nor the
Point of order, this is not about me. It's about the process. And council can make that decision of whether how it should go, but
You're the one that put this on the agenda.
I object to personal attacks, and I would appreciate you, as mayor, stopping them. I don't think this is a personal attack. I think it's his view as to what a rotation, why a rotation might not be a good idea.
So if I can continue, please. So if I can continue, please. Neither the temperament nor the email blogging history to earn consideration for the all-important responsibility of being mayor. And let's remember that that is a responsibility. It's not like being mayor is the same as getting a participation trophy in a soccer or anything. It's a responsibility. So whatever you decide tonight, that is just something I'd like the council to consider. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, I received a text from someone that was unable to get on on Zoom. Do you mind if I read it for that person?
Okay.
I am in favor of George Weiss being mayor. He has been an advocate for the residents since he has been in office. He has served our city. He has served our country, and I would like to see him be able to become mayor this next year. Sometimes I feel that he is one of the few at the council that is actually for residents, from Sharon Leon.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Comments?
Yeah, let me just say, I appreciate the the resident support for this. I I solicited no one to speak today in any way, either in person or by Zoom. But I do appreciate the support for this motion. I think it's fair. I think it's democratic. I would also probably agree to an elected mayor position every two years if we could do that as an alternative. But I think rotate not rotating it is a not the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, other comments?
Can I speak?
Alex?
Yeah, so I I appreciate, George, you bringing this forward, you know, like as many of the, as was said before, it's not a question about the individual, it's a a policy question. And and this kind of stuff, these governance questions, I I I find kind of fascinating. When so first question for the city attorney, can you help me understand, what does our code say about the selection of the mayor?
Mayor, Councilmember Runagi, the code does not speak to the city's municipal code does not speak to the selection of mayor. This the state law, there is state law that obligates the city to select a mayor and a mayor pro tem.
Okay. And then, so I looked at the, so that that was what my, when I looked at the code, that's what I my view as well. I tried to look at other Orange County cities. The only one that I'm aware of that does a rotational mayor is Huntington Beach, which is why I think Tito Ortiz, he got to be the mayor pro tem for a little bit, and then he was removed because of this rotational policy. So I haven't, but there I think there's I'm sure there's other cities in Orange County out there that have a rotational mayor. Then after looking at the code, because you know, as the city attorney said, the code is silent, then I looked at the history, and it's kind of also an interesting history, because for the first, from the city's founding in 1927 until about 1980, it was fascinating because it used to the the tradition used to be that that many people were mayor for three times in a row, like Jesse Riddle was the mayor from 56 to 1960, so I guess four years. And so that was actually the pattern back then was you had people being the mayor for two or three-year periods. So I just thought that was that that legislative history was interesting. You know, and then I also spoke to several recent mayors, and my understanding is that even before 2020, it was common for it was not expected that every council member would would become the mayor. So I think there's been some testimony that this that I think there have been at least four council members over that, I don't know, 25-year period, that did not during one during their term get a chance to be the mayor. And I think sometimes that works out, just the the like Rob Zerschmebl didn't become the mayor, he was the mayor pro tem, and then he didn't run for reelection. So I'm there's nothing in the code and nothing in our history that gives me a clear understanding that the history has been to have a rotational mayor. I think the mayor has it's rotated, but I don't I don't think it's it's consistent with our history to say that we've always had an automatic rotation based on on seniority. I also think it's important to think about the recent history. And there was some 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 comments about the, you know, the concern about two people being in positions of power. What I would I went back and watched some of the recent meetings for the selection of mayor and well, so before that first, what I think is important is that during in 2020, I'm so glad that Bob was was the one who was in the position to be the mayor then, because I just think, you know, that in a crisis like COVID, it's not when it's not the time to have anyone there. I'm really glad that Bob happened to be the mayor at that time. And then in at the end of 2020, the council unanimously decided that, you know, that was right before the vaccine and a really scary time in the council made the decision for him to be the mayor again in 2021. That wasn't Bob's idea. And I just think this notion that that, you know, Bob or is trying to, you know, accumulate power is just nothing further from the truth. I think in the history of Laguna Beach, there's going to be there are very few public servants who will who will rival what Bob has done for this community. So I just I I find it the these these attacks to be offensive, because that's just not not realistic about what's going on. So, you know, when we look at the code, the history, the reality of what's going on, and the question is, what's in the best interest of the city? Because it's really not about what's in the best interests of any of us as individuals. That's not who we serve. It's about what's in the best interest of the city. So when the roles of the mayor are, you know, the first among equals, but it's it's not not more power than anyone else. But the most important role is running meetings. So and in model, when I was in Model United Nations, the role of the chair was a very important role, because that was the person who had to make sure that the meeting flowed the right way. That person didn't have any more power, any more voting authority. But that person had to know the rules, had to be someone who could build consensus. And so it wasn't just the most senior person who didn't have an opportunity to be the chair. It was the person who was the most qualified to be the chair. So I continue to believe that as it relates to running meetings. I don't think it would be a good idea to sacrifice to pick just to pick someone not based on who's the best to serve as the chair, because that would lead to a year of meetings that are not as good as as effectively run as they could be. I think it's also a very important role of the mayor is to be a representative to outside agencies. We deal with complex problems that that require action from, you know, the county, state, the federal government. So it's really important that that the person who's the mayor represents the council well and represents the city well. You know, there was commentary about, so I think, George, I if you're, I I think the idea of when people go to vote, they vote for city council members. And if we had an elected mayor, that would be different. And so I'm if, George, you're interested in putting that before the voters, I would I would support that. So the voters can make make that decision about having that position. But voters elect council members to make tough decisions. And I think the selection of the mayor is just one of those decisions. And so I'm not supportive of changing the way that we've done things in the city. And I think that and I so I'm 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 supportive of keeping the policy as is or no or not changing the policy.
Yeah, I can go, yeah. Yeah. So, you know, one of the things I've learned since I've been on council, you know, first couple of years I was on, I think Bob was the mayor. And when you first join the council, you have a lot to learn. It's not, no matter what your background is, when you're serving, when you're when you become an elected official and you're serving, it there's a ramp up time, and it takes a while. And but, you know, when I think about, and this is not a personal issue for me, just to make it clear, I want to make that it's not a personal issue. But when I think about, you know, who I would elect in a leadership position, it doesn't really matter if it's I'm it's in the private sector and I'm working, I'm going to hire someone to run an organization, or if I'm here on the council dais. I think about in this way, I'm going to name off some things that are important to me. And one is that you follow the rules and you follow the laws required by council members. That includes the Brown Act, and that includes Robert's Rules of Order and other things. You have to demonstrate an understanding of how city councils meetings should be run. And as you're participating, you you learn about what your role as a council member is, when you talk, when you don't talk, when to ask questions, when to make commentary, and you follow kind of the mayor's lead on that. You have to work well with the city manager. It really doesn't matter who it is. The city, the mayor works with the city manager quite a bit, and you have to work constructively with these people. You have to sometimes collaborate when you're the mayor as with the city attorney, because there are many issues that come up that, you know, that we deal with, not all of them come before the council. You have to treat staff with respect and dignity, because they're the people that carry out our and provide service to our residents, and they they carry out our council priorities. You have to be respectful of your other city council members, and you have to work collegially. You have to demonstrate, even in good temperament, even when you're openly criticized, which is sometimes hard. But, you know, some people do that, and you just have to, you know, you just take it. And that's the way it is. But, you know, you just don't want to get in a back and forth with people. You'd be respectful of the residents. And then, you know, I had this happen when I was mayor last time, we had a couple fires. But it's very important, and I got a lot of feedback about about this, is that you have to you have to be able to represent the city in the media. And especially it's particularly during times of disaster, no one wants to do that. No one's, you know, that's not something you relish as a mayor, but it's something that you have to do. And Bob did an excellent job during the pandemic. We went through some very difficult times. We came out in excellent shape, and that was a tribute to a lot of the work that, you know, Bob, all the talent that he brings brings to the council, and it was very evident. I think it's kind of funny that people bring up Peter Blake, because at the time he was on the council, I heard a lot of lot, a lot of talk about, don't you guys dare make him mayor, mayor pro tem. I heard that all the time. So those are my thoughts. I'm not going to support this agenda bill for the reasons stated.
Mark, you want to?
Sure. The short time that I've been on council, I've come to realize that the role of mayor is not as ceremonial as I once thought. And I have to say, I have a great deal of admiration to Bob having the been up here and, you know, in closed session and at both the Water District as well, and his performance and his ability interacting with the agencies, interacting with other governmental agencies, both state, county. You know, I, like I said, I have a lot of admiration for him, and I think he's a great job. And if I ever am considered for mayor, I I oftentimes get nervous of the thought, wondering, thinking I'm going to have to compete with his past performance. So in any the but what it boils down to for me, stability is important to me. Most of you probably know that I'm kind of like things calmed and balanced. And I, you know, coming, I know that this is political, and it's a political decision in many respects. And I do understand the constituents. But I still look at this from my But I still look at this from my responsibility to, you know, setting the city up to the to be able to perform at its best. And I think that if I took that decision-making away, I I think that it would be, you know, it wouldn't be good for the city. And I can only look back at history. And and obviously, there are some things historically that I do not believe would have been in the best interest of the city. I don't think that the the added contentiousness would have been good. I think it would have been I think it would have been a disaster. And I just can't really support anything that would allow that to occur and not have, you know, not be able to have a decision-making over something like that. So that's where I stand. I do not support the idea. Well, I I think this, you know, item isn't about me. It isn't about George, but there's been a lot said about me and George. No, I'm listen, I think generally as a general matter, I think rotations are good. I never asked to be mayor, never asked anybody to be mayor. People just asked me to be mayor. But, you know, we've got a number of people up here who are qualified. I expect we'll have, you know, rotations into new, you know, new people coming in for mayor, mayor pro tem. You know, I will not be seeking or accepting that assignment in December because there are, I think, in my view, at least I'll be supporting other candidates because I think there are other qualified candidates up here. But I do think it's a decision that needs to remain remain with the discretion of the council. They have to they they've got five, it's a five-member council. They need to decide who they want to have running their meetings. They need to decide who they want to have representing them, you know, in terms of the media. So I think I I would be supportive of what the majority is saying here that we don't adopt a policy and we leave the current status quo in place and let council select the whoever they think the best candidates are for mayor and pro tem and mayor pro tem each year. So I don't know as though there's, do we need to take an action on this? I don't think there's support for moving ahead with the policy.
I don't believe so, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, well, we are adjourned to our meeting of December twelve and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.